And the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Boswell.
Dear Lord, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. And we seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with evergreen justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boswell. Commissioner English, please call the roll.
Mr. Appicello.
Here.
Mr. McPherson.
Here.
Mr. Bain.
Here.
Ms. Vanuch.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
And myself. Madam Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Commissioner English. Any declarations of disqualification or disclosure this evening?
Madam Chair, I will be not sitting in on item one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boswell.
Recusing myself, that's the word.
Okay. Any others? Okey dokey. And before we move on to public presentations, we may like to change our agenda this evening. Do I have any motions to update our agenda?
Madam Chairman, I would like to add an agenda item for a closed hearing at the appropriate place in the meeting. I think after other business.
Okay. We have a motion to add a closed meeting with county attorney after other business on the agenda. Any second?
A second, Demos.
Okay. Mr. Appicello, any comment?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Randall, any comment?
No.
All right. Anyone else? All right, please vote. Okay, motion carries seven zero. So now moving on to public presentations. This evening we have a special guest, Mr. Brian Council. He's from County Transportation and he's going to update us on the construction project. Please come on down.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. My name is Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works, charge of capital projects, transportation, buildings, utilities, other things like that. Happy to be before you tonight to give you a quarterly transportation update, although I'm always, always able to come back and update you guys as you, as you see fit. But this is a quarterly one and I have a little presentation for you, at least I can see it. Okay, there it is. Thank you. Transportation projects, as you guys have traveled the county probably have seen that the 610 widening has virtually completed. There's some punchless work going on as well as some additional work on the Stormwater Management Pond, but for the most part that project is complete. It has an official completion date of October 18th, October 2018. The contractor did finish most everything early and we're happy with that and satisfied with all the work. But you'll see some crews out there doing some things for the next couple of months, small tasks while they finish out all the work. How do I move this to the next slide? Michael tell me. Oh, cool. Thanks, Mike. Brook Road, the, one of the eastern parts of the county, the north-south corridor, that Brook Road, that is getting a widening enhancement. If you've driven through there, you can see that the contractor's made quite a bit of progress clearing on both sides of the road and on both ends of the bridge. That's going to continue for a couple more weeks and then you'll, you'll start to see some grading along with that on the southern end first working back towards the north. Belmont Ferry Farm Trail, that's the portion of the trail that goes from the Route Three Bridge, I'm sorry, from the Falmouth Bottom up to the Route Three Bridge. We have a contractor that's mobilized and getting ready to start on that, so you'll see construction right there along River Road for the next few months. Papa Road in Mountain View, this is a project just south of the Mountain View intersection with Papa Road. It's a project that's going to try to straighten out one of the bad curves as you approach that intersection. That is out to bid and we hope to get that bids in by the end of July. Juggins Road, this is a project to, that's for the new Moncur Elementary School. The last bid of property acquisition has, has taken place with Perry Farm HOA and we're hoping to advertise that by the end of the year. Right outside our doors here, the Route One and Courthouse Road intersection improvements. We've begun right-of-way acquisition, met with most of the, the property owners. Everybody understands kind of what's going on and we're moving forward with that. The last phase of the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail that goes from Route Three intersection, Route, Route Three up to the Boyhood Home. The alignment is still in, in progress. We're still working with the Boyhood Home, trying to figure out where we're gonna, where we're gonna terminate that. Final decision has not been made yet. Board is, the board is evaluating two or three alternatives for that. We hope to get that pushed along as quickly as possible. Onville Road sidewalk extension, this is an important sidewalk that carried, that facilitate pedestrian traffic between Route 610 and I think it's called Garrison, Garrison Woods, I think is the, the area. It's about 1,100 feet that's already in design. We had to add a little, little piece that did not get completed with the VDOT project, the intersection project with Onville Road. We have a proposal to do that. We're reviewing that. We should have most of the design done in the fall for a fall advertisement for construction to start in the spring. Ferry Road and Route Three, right there at the railroad tracks and the McDonald's, that is a VDOT administered project and they have that slated to begin in, for advertisement in November. The big VDOT project you see out there being done by Shirley Construction, the I-95 interchange and the Route 630 widening, that's progressing very nicely. It's still in the utilities and, and some heavy and some light grading. There's going to be some traffic switches coming up pretty soon. Not exactly sure on the dates, but they're running a little bit ahead of schedule. Work is going pretty good. They're doing some utility tie-ins for water and for sewer, but for the most part, everything is going fairly well there.
Sir, the, back up on that last one that you did.
Sure.
Are they gonna, you said that's gonna open on the 30th, so that's when the traffic light will be working also? Right there at White, at Weiss Road and Courthouse? I see they got the traffic light up there, but it's just covered. Is that gonna be?
Yes, that, that light will be operational to facilitate traffic going in and out of the parking lot.
But I also, so to get in and out of that commuter lot, you can only get on through Weiss Road or is it going to be able to access it off of Courthouse? Because I see there was a, I think there's a-
There is an access off of Courthouse Road.
Are they gonna allow them to do that with, are they gonna allow them to do that?
The, the vehicle traffic coming off of 630 into the-
Yeah, right there by the fire department, you know where I'm talking about?
Yes, yes, sir.
They're gonna allow them to use that with, did you-
I haven't heard anything to the contrary.
Well, don't you think that may be an issue? I don't know if this is your, your bailiwick or not, but I think with, with that congestion and that curve and all that stuff and they're coming in that commuter lot, that's gonna be a major problem if they allow them to come out. They should be allowing them to come out of Weiss Road in and out instead of off of Courthouse.
That, that's a good point. I know you drive that all the time and I'm sure you're familiar with some of the traffic scenarios in there. We have a meeting coming up with VDOT on that. I'd be happy to address that and report back to you.
Yeah, because I think-
What I find out.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a, make sure, I would say they come in and out of Weiss Road only till that road gets straightened out.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that and I'll, and I'll report back to you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. It's the, well, it's gonna be the every two-year application now for smart scale projects. We have the deadline coming up. We're going to apply for four projects to be submitted for that. Enon Road project, which is going to hopefully facilitate traffic in and out of Stafford High School. Winding Creek Road facilitate or get rid of or add on to the, the 630 widening, parts of Winding Creek Road, they're gonna, they're gonna improve there with the VDOT project. It's gonna extend those improvements out past about, about another half mile. Eskimo Hill Road, right there at the light, that's one of the ones we're hoping to score well on, but VDOT's, VDOT's requirements on what that project needs to look like and ours are a little different, so we're, we're hoping for the best on that. And then Stephanica Mountain View Road intersection, we're hoping for matching funds for that project as well.
I'm sorry to ask you this question. You, you may or may not be the right person to ask. We have an agenda item later on during the meeting about our legislative agenda and one of those items is related to smart scale. And I just want to be sure that we've captured it correctly. Right now, the way it's written is, is it speaks to the state looking at traffic generation, or we prefer that the state look at traffic generation during the weekend vice the weekday. And I want to be sure that's captured the right way. Is it that we just want them to look at weekend traffic or we want them to look at a combination of weekday and weekend traffic?
Mr. Appicello, I'm, I'm, I don't have that, that answer. I don't, I don't know what they normally do. We've gotten involved in the construction on this to a pretty good degree and we're reviewing the applications now for the projects before they're submitted. I don't know what VDOT requires or what they, what they mandate for traffic, traffic counting, whether it's on a weekend or-
Well, right now, I think it's just focused on weekday and I think our, our belief is that that doesn't adequately capture throughput during the weekend as well.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it's an either or, or a combination of both that we really want them to focus on. So maybe we'll have that conversation when the item comes up. But I appreciate your insight nonetheless.
But what I will do, follow up with Mr. English's request, I will look into that and I'll, I'll respond back to you on that as well based on what, what I can learn from staff that's been working on that for a number of years. So, you're welcome.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may.
Mr. McPherson?
I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask, but the Bells Hill Road repair that got washed out, is that still on schedule to, to get fixed?
It is. We, we, we keep up with VDOT and what the, of course, it's a road closed in Stafford County. There's a lot of interest in that getting, getting back, getting going and getting fixed. I did talk to Kyle Bates about a week ago and then I also saw the article in the paper. So that, that's about the same information. It's, it's a, it's a very, it may not look it from the picture, but it is a very difficult project. You've got a lot of fill there and a curvy road that's, you're gonna try to rebuild in, in bad conditions with quite a lot of constraints. I know they're trying to start that in the next month and it's gonna take two or three months to do according to Kyle. So I, I, I hope that's good information. Sooner the better, I, I understand.
No, I do understand it's very difficult, the way the, the washout happens. So, thank you. I just wanted to, so what the paper said is basically what we're looking at?
Kyle reiterated, reiterated that to me, yes.
Okay.
I have one more item that, that did not make it onto that list by, by my error. It's the Route One improvements at the crucifix right up there. VDOT has, just to make sure I get this right, the temporary light, and I know there's a lot of interest with a lot of different people on that, the, the temporary light is on the schedule to be installed. And I think it's, we're confident to say it'll be done by the end of August. That's what VDOT says. They've, they've missed a couple of deadlines on this, not necessarily their fault, but we've given updates on this and pretty confident and they, they haven't come true, so I'm hesitant to say definitively, but the, it's looking like the, by the end of August that should be on there. It's one of the, one of the top three projects VDOT, VDOT has going on with signalization right now and that's, we're, we're hoping for the best by the end of August. That's all the transportation stuff I have.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I have one other one, because you mentioned Wide Water. So, Wide Water State Park, the state was going to, or maybe they already have done some work to improve the road leading to the state park. Do we know if that's happened or when it will happen?
I feel inadequate because I can't answer that for you either, Mr. Appicello.
Okay.
That'd be Raven Road, I assume. Raven Road is the road that's gonna lead back to that off of Brook? Is that, is that correct?
No, it's actually-
This is another one?
I, I think it's a road off of Telegraph. Don't hold me to that, but I think that's the primary way to get back into the state park. And there were some issues and concerns about whether that road was sufficient, of sufficient size to handle the potential traffic going into it.
That's a great question. That's something I should, I should know. I'll, again, I'll, I'll look into that and I will respond back to you with, with whatever I find out.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. When is the road work on Shelton Shop, right by 610, supposed to be finished? They're paving right now. It's a disaster. They do it right in the middle of rush hour.
It's a, is a VDOT maintenance paving?
Yeah.
They've just milled and paved?
Yeah.
Boy, you guys are not, not asking anything.
It's because I sit in it every day.
I, I can't, I don't know the answer to that either. I, I really do apologize. There's, there's some of that. I don't drive that road every day, so I can't notice kind of what they're doing and stuff like that. And I don't tackle every topic with Kyle when I, when I talk to him. But if that's a maintenance project, they're, they're, they're working on it as quickly as they can and it, under traffic, it's difficult as well. But I, I will, I'll ask Kyle.
When you talk to Kyle, is there, I know VDOT has certain times, you know, their workers have to work, but does it have to be in the middle of rush hour? Like, it just seems kind of like, couldn't they just do it on maybe the weekend? Because, I mean, or something? I don't, nighttime?
There are lots of considerations for that, that those are possibilities. I, I know they do it on 95 and they do it on some other roads. I don't know their criteria for how they decide whether to do a main thoroughfare like that, that is obviously crowded during rush hour.
Because there's no really other way around, so then they're shifting-
There's not.
-traffic into Park Ridge and, and all that, so it's-
You're correct. That's, that's true. I, but I, I will, I'll, I'll look into that.
You've got a big to-do list.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it.
Awesome. Any other questions, Mr. English?
I've got one more question. The, the road at Shelton, I mean, the road at Courthouse and Winding Creek in Mountain View, when is that gonna, I know they've started realigning and changed the traffic pattern. When is that gonna kind of, when are they gonna put a light up there? I don't see where they've even started to even set up a light for that, because is, is there gonna be a light there, I hope?
Just so I understand, you're, you're, you're talking about the intersection with Winding Creek and Route 630?
Oh, Mountain and- Rameth Church, I'm sorry. Rameth Church, Winding Creek and Courthouse, yeah.
Yes, so that, I think the, some of the road improvements have been laid out there and they're getting ready to do that. I don't think a light is gonna go up during the first phase. I think as, as the road widens, that, that light will go in, if I understand the, the sequencing of the work.
So they're not gonna put anything temporary up there just to-
Not, not initially. There may be a temporary light at these, their first phase is just to improve the intersection a little bit to redirect traffic.
Okay.
To be opposed from each other, so that, so the opposite roads can see each other. And then I think there is a light during the second or third, there's about eight traffic phases with the project. I think a light comes in at phase two or, I mean, phase three or four to, to help the congestion along that road and keep things moving. I don't think you're gonna see it for a little bit longer, but there, there is a permanent light coming out.
They'll have that thing straightened out before the school, Colonial Forge opens up, aren't they? That, right there where they've got Colonial Forge all tore up and they only got one entrance?
They're, they're trying. They're trying.
Okay. Thanks.
And your, and your timeline just got a little, two weeks shorter. School starts earlier.
Next year, that's, that's, hopefully, it might, most of that work should be done by the time school starts next year.
Anybody else?
I have six other.
Oh. All right. I think you're, I think you're, you're safe to go now. Thank you so much. It's really helpful.
And I'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So now moving on to the rest of the public presentations, now's the time that anybody in the audience can come down and speak on any item that is not scheduled for a public hearing tonight. Tonight, we have one public hearing, which is the conditional use permit for Jonas Atai. So if you're not, if you're here, you want to talk? Nobody? Okay. So we'll close the public presentations portion of tonight's meeting and move on to item number one on the agenda, which is the public hearing for the conditional use permit for Mr. Jonas Atai. And for this, we recognize Mr. Zaraf.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Mike Zaraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a condition use permit for Jonas Atai. The, all right, the request is a condition use permit to allow motor vehicle sales use in the B2 Urban Commercial zoning district. The applicant notes that this proposed business would conduct much of its sales via the internet. The inventory would be available to view online and customers often would visit the site to look at one vehicle. The, this staff believes would limit the number of customers visiting the business to browse inventory. Regardless, approval of this use permit would not prohibit this business or future motor vehicle sales businesses that might go onto the property from allowing either full retail or online sales or a combination of both. The property is parcel 21-54F. It covers 1.29 acres. Again, the applicant, Jonas Atai. Bob Goodall is the agent for the applicant and the sites in the Akwaia election district. The property is located on the west side of Jefferson Davis Highway, approximately 1,400 feet north of the intersection with Garrisonville Road. You can see on this zoning map, sites highlighted in blue. Surrounding zoning includes B2 zoned land. The uses include a hotel to the south, mini storage warehouse to the north, and gas station and convenience center to the east. Looking at the zoning history, the property was originally zoned B1 general business and at some point before 1978, rezoned to B2 urban commercial. There are no proffers on this property. Sites located in the Akwaia Business Center in November of 1988, site plan for the access road to this site, along with the adjacent vehicle fueling and convenience store, was approved. In August of 1999, then a site plan was approved for the, an equipment rental facility on this subject property. And that was the original use that occupied the site. Currently, a commercial retail business operates out of the, out of the building on this site. Comprehensive plan designates the property within the commercial corridor and suburban land use designations. The comp plan specifically addresses motor, motor vehicle sales uses. And in the suburban land use district, the plan addresses vehicle sales and, and supports this use along Jefferson Davis Highway near the intersections with Garrisonville Road and another road along, along Route One. So this site is consistent with the location recommendations in the comprehensive plan. The, looking at the aerial photo, property is developed with a 9,000 square foot, two-story building with four service bay doors. There's a single access point into the site off of a private access drive that's shared with the adjacent, the adjacent uses. Paved parking areas are provided along two sides of the building and gravel area on the western side of the site. The areas not developed on the site include mature trees. There is a drainage channel that runs across the front edge of the site and underneath the access drive that enters into the property. There are no other sensitive environmental features on this property. This is a view of the building from the site entrance. The general development plan utilizes the original site plan that illustrates the layout of the site. There are no changes proposed to the existing building access or parking areas. The general development plan does identify the location of 29 parking spaces. And written into the, into the plan are how those spaces may be used. It identifies locations of vehicle display spaces. Highlight those. Vehicle display spaces are highlighted here and in this location along the building. And you also have customer parking designated here and employee parking designated here. And since this is a very busy map, the building is right here. Additional spaces could be added to the gravel area and then there are spaces within the building for vehicles to be displayed in a showroom area and within service bays within the building.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question.
Sure, Mr. Randall.
Where, can you show me the gravel area on, associated with, on this map?
Yes.
I hear it talked about a couple of times and I, and I want to just-
It's approximately in this, this area.
Okay, is that a whole area then, or is, or is it, there, it looked to me like there were trees that were butted up right against the building on the, when you looked at the, at the real, it looked like, see, there's, that's pretty-
So where's the gravel?
So if you go back to the other one and you look at it from that angle, it looks like-
Yeah, it's probably like that.
Just, okay, so it does not look, not a very large area.
I have a quick question too, Mr. Zaraf. On, I know you haven't gotten to the proffers yet, but it says on here, "All outdoor storage vehicles for sale shall be limited to the parking spaces within the subject of the parcel and prohibited from open space areas." So that means they could only have 29 cars on the property at any time?
There could be more because there is a space, the area within the building where they could, could have-
So what, three garage doors, four garage doors?
I believe the applicant has estimated maybe 10 additional kind of cars within the building.
So then where will customers park?
Well, that would, that's the full number of spaces.
Just Uber there because you're gonna buy a car and then you need to-
Well, they've designated, that's the total number of spaces. I mean, they, they would likely have to have less, fewer cars for display. They would have to leave some, some spaces available for part, for customers.
But the gravel, the gravel space would be defined as open space?
No, the gravel area, they could potentially store-
So what do you define as open space then?
That would be-
That would not be?
Go to another.
I need another color.
Could be here.
That's where all the trees are, isn't it?
That's where all the trees are.
Yeah.
And then, and then their other proffers are leaving all the vegetation.
Right. So you have, you have a lot of vegetation around here. There's, there's open space area. Go to another color. Kind of around here. That's kind of grassed area.
Is that part of-
So the condition kind of gets to that spot there where, you know, cars can't just be parked up in the, in the grass near the entrance.
Yeah. Blocking the way. Okay. We'll come back to that one.
Actually, I do have a question associated with this.
Sorry.
So obviously we have parking standards associated with an official parking space. Are there any standards for gravel parking? I mean, you know, can you just stack cars a couple of inches apart if you wanted to on a gravel?
The way our conditions are worded, they still have to have drive aisles available, you know, so they can't just double stack on gravel. It's no different than if it, the area was paved.
Okay, thanks.
And I want to correct my earlier statement. I said proffers and I meant conditions. I do that all the time.
That's fine.
Mr. Bain?
I was just wondering, you hadn't mentioned it yet, but noted on that drawing is a potential sign.
Yes.
And it's not real clear. I presume that's right along Jeff Davis Highway. And I just wanted to make sure, is that still on the applicant's property or is that in a right-of-way area?
The potential sign location is right here, if you can see. And that is on the applicant's property.
Okay.
It is not, it's just along the access road.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, go ahead. I know we derailed you.
I think you covered everything.
The end.
Okay. Moving on to transportation. This is the shared private access drive, looking from the site east towards US Route One. The use is estimated to generate 291 vehicle trips per day. The trash, transportation impact analysis would not be required since there's fewer than 1,000 vehicle trips per day. Also, staff would note the internet focus of the proposed business would likely result in a smaller traffic impact than, than these estimates, although it wouldn't keep some future business or change in operations to allow and possibly reach that vehicle, vehicle count. Okay, although the traffic volumes will be relatively low, there are conditions being recommended to ensure the use does not impact the access road into the site. Some of those conditions include prohibiting parking along this access road, requiring the installation and maintenance of no parking signs, and also prohibiting the loading and unloading of vehicles being transported to and from the site along the access drive. Also, a concern was expressed regarding the condition of the access road and a request was made for the access road to be repaired and repaved. The access road has shared maintenance between the subject property, the Hampton Inn and the fueling station. The applicant has concurred with the proposed condition that they repair and repave the access drive within six months of approval of a use permit. The applicant then on their own accord will need to pursue reimbursement by the other properties subject to the maintenance agreement that's in place.
So, Mr. Zaraf, I guess the county doesn't really ever get in the middle of this and this is the same issue we have when developers come in with HOAs and they say, "We're gonna give the HOA X, Y, and Z." And we always say, "Look, we're not, we can't verify that, validate that. We can't enforce that or we shouldn't be in the middle of it." So I, I'm just a little bit concerned with that, those, what, those two sentences in that condition. To me, it really should just read, "Within six months after the approval of this conditional use permit, the owner will repair, mill, and repave the private access road serving the property." Period. "If the private road access serving the property is not completely repaired and paved within six months after approval of this conditional use permit for whatever reason, then the owner agrees that such noncompliance is willful." I would just strike out those, because it's not really our business how they deal with their road maintenance agreement.
Okay. And these, you know, conditions are, are conditions that can be imposed by the county. So we do try to though, work with the applicant and when we, when we are proposing conditions so they can get a feel.
And we'll give them a chance. And they come up, we'll give them a chance.
They may, they may address that.
I just wanted to say it before so they could get their response ready. Mr. Randall?
I have a question. So do you know if there's a maintenance agreement now between those three businesses currently there? I mean, it's the same owner, same, just a different business. I mean, it's the same owner, same, just a different business. Do you know if there's a maintenance agreement currently in place?
There is a maintenance agreement in place, yes.
To the point that it's kept that access road in a state of repair? It looks to me like it's in a state of disrepair to some extent. So does the maintenance agreement work?
Well...
They never do.
Well, obviously then it's not an effective, I, I'm concerned that, you know, at some point in time, we can say whatever we want and we're going to mill it and grade it and repave it, but five years from now, it could be in the same state as we're looking at right now.
Well, there's always that, that potential, but I guess this is an opportunity to kind of...
To fix the...
Get things back on track. And then from here on, then it is going to be up to the property owners. And, and in these situations, we, the county can make the property, you know, if there's complaints about the conditions of roads, we just kind of can let the property owners know what the situation is and encourage them to do, work on the improvements.
I'll follow up in a minute. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So we have, I've already mentioned some of the conditions. We have other conditions proposed that are intended to limit the potential impacts regarding, there are conditions that would limit overcrowding of vehicles. Conditions here would require outside storage of vehicles for sale be limited to the parking spaces on the subject property and prohibited in open space areas. Kind of discussed that. On the second point, screening of, of the use, a condition would require the existing mature trees that screen the site from Interstate 95 and the adjacent hotel be preserved. On the third point, limiting visual impacts, there would be a condition to remove, to require removal of signage brackets that are on the roof of the building. There are no, there's no sign there now, but it would prohibit maybe in the future a, a new sign being located on top of the roof. And then the fourth point, and the, and the last two points we've discussed regarding access road repair and maintenance and vehicle delivery restrictions. In response to comments from Commissioner McPherson, additional comments are being proposed. You did receive a revised version of the approval resolution tonight. And we have several additional new conditions. A lot of them are highlighted on the last page, page three of the resolution. Those include limiting storage of inoperable vehicles to 30 days, requiring disposal of hazardous materials in accordance with County Fire Prevention Code and other applicable regulations, prohibiting outside storage of tires, limiting hours of operation to between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, limiting refuse collection and deliveries to between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and permitting one monument sign requiring the design in accordance with the image that the applicant submitted with their application. There's also, the new resolution does also include slight modifications to some of the existing conditions that we had proposed, Condition Six and Seven. We added some language to regarding the paving to clarify that the street will be milled and paved. And then also for Condition Eight, clarifying vehicles can also be driven to the site because the way it read is, it almost sounded like you could only deliver them on, on trucks and that's not the intent there.
Let me, Mike, in reference to that one you just brought up, number eight.
Mm-hmm.
They're not, are they, you said that they are going to be driving the vehicles in there, they're not going to have a truck driving, I mean, a tractor and trailer driving, even like the problems we had on Derrick Lane?
According to the applicant, they said probably 95% of the cars that they bring to the site are driven there because they're, they're brought over from the auto auction.
All right.
But some of them do, are brought, brought in on a flatbed truck or a tow truck, so...
Is that, wouldn't that cause an issue with the, don't say they think it's going to cause an issue with the motel with that, they're bringing it in on by tractor and trailer?
Well, the, the intent of this is that they have to be just a smaller, single-vehicle flatbed truck or a tow truck. So they cannot bring in, they cannot use a tractor trailer.
All right, so then number eight can have to be limited drivers instead of, the vehicles shall be driven into the site and not may?
Where, no.
Number eight, number eight, instead of the vehicles may be driven, I'd like to see that they shall be driven, not may.
Okay.
Because that might help with, as far as attracting, you know, it sounds like it's an open ended, they can go ahead and either drive them in or they can bring them in a tractor and trailer is the way I'm kind of getting at it.
Okay. Well, I don't think...
No, it shall, it will, it's will.
I think you actually need to look at the language in the revised draft. It just says, "Limit delivery of vehicles, the single vehicle, flatbed, or tow trucks and vehicles." Vehicles may be driven to the site. So if a vehicle is operable and it's for sale and they're taking it, they bought it somewhere to wholesaler and they're driving it to the site, that's the only "may" that I see in the condition.
Yeah, I just, I don't want them to, my problem, I just don't want to have a Derrick, I don't want to have a...
If they're on a flatbed truck and the truck drives in, then they're being driven to the site.
Right, yeah. I see that. I don't want a Derrick Lane problem again like we had. That's, that's my, that's my whole problem. I don't want them to, to block the, to be blocking up the, to the motel and then I want them blocking up the...
Can we, can I suggest a change? Instead of, "And vehicles may be driven," say, "Or vehicles may individually be driven to the site."
That'll work, that'll work, yeah. I just feel like we're going to have a Derrick Lane problem here.
So to, to that point, Mike, can you go back to the overhead or, and show us exactly? I know it mentions in here that there won't be any deliveries unloading or loading on the access road, it will be on the property itself. Could you show us where that loading or unloading would be so that we understand that...
That might be a question for the applicant.
Well, again, there may be many of these, we may ask them again. Who knows?
Loading or unloading would be, basically be required.
Inside that area, correct?
Yes.
Off the access road?
Right.
Okay, so...
So, you know, tractor trailers just are not going to work, so...
Right, that's, that's a pretty tight corner for anything larger than a tow truck maybe to get around that.
I just hope they don't use that hotel to make a turnaround.
I, I, that's, that's, yes, I totally agree.
Can I ask while that, while that screen is up? It looks to me like there are at least two trailers from tractor trailers parked in the gravel area. Is that what those are or are they storage buildings?
I may defer to the applicant on that. Those might be storage containers, but they...
Okay. So somehow they got there as a tractor trailer delivery or something. I don't think we'd want to allow something like that to occur.
While, while we have this picture up, can you, what is the access road?
I'm glad this pen works tonight. The access road is basically, this is the full length, but the access then for the, to the applicant's site is, is this.
So a dumb question, but it kind of relates to the Derrick Lane issue. We had somebody parking vehicles on somebody else's property. Is it clear that that can't happen in this, I see a big parking area, I guess associated with the hotel. Obviously, it would be an issue between the hotel and this applicant, but again, I'd be concerned that somehow somebody tries to use their parcel or the adjacent parcel. What is the property next to it on the other side again? That's the storage?
It's a gas station.
Doesn't it have like a little strip mall in it too? I can't, like a Hunan Chef or something?
Right, this, yeah, it's a multi-tenant. This is a Valero and Fastmart with other, other uses.
Do you have another question, Ms. Rapicella?
No, I, I guess I'm just commenting. Maybe there's not something that we can deal with, but I'm just concerned again that parking may occur on somebody else's property.
We do have condition for us, "Vehicles associated with the subject parcel shall be prohibited from parking along the access road serving the site."
Right, the access road, but again, there's other, other parcels. That's the problem we have with that.
And how are you going to stop the customers, right? Because if a customer is going, driving their car, they may see parking in the hotel and then just walk down the access road to the facility. And, and we can maybe let the applicant handle a couple of these questions, but before you get down from the podium, Condition Number 14 says, "The existing vegetation along Interstate 95 and between the building and the adjacent hotel shall be preserved." Is "shall" a requirement, Dan?
"Shall" is a mandatory term.
Okay, so there's no question, they'll, they'll be able to remove that to alleviate the buffer. And then, Mike, do you know if there's a light out, like right where the green pin is at the very end of that road onto Garrison, or onto Jefferson Davis Highway? Is there a light there?
In this location, no.
Mm-hmm.
There's a left turn lane though, a striped left turn lane in this location for people to turn in.
So they'll be test driving, probably coming outright, going up to sit at that light and then going down Route One or going across four lanes of traffic on Jefferson Davis to go down, right? Yeah?
Yeah, they, this, this would be an unsignalized intersection, so you had to...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Zaraf?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I do have a couple of questions. There was a lot of correspondence back and forth between staff and the applicant. One of those relates to conditions that were proposed and the applicant, for the most part, I think agreed to all the conditions. So I'm looking at, in our package attachment one, page 12 of 16, Condition Number 15, which I think is a standard condition we put into almost all business-related CUPs about carnival signs, banners, balloons, et cetera. Do you know why that didn't make it into the list of proposed conditions?
Yes, because the new signage ordinance actually covers that and it's no longer necessary as a condition.
Okay. And the other, the other thing I would point out, again, in a piece of correspondence, I believe it was the current supervisor or maybe it was the previous supervisor and planning commissioner who asked about the maximum number of vehicles that could be parked on the site. And I think the response accounted was 56 and then maybe somewhere else it said 60. So is, would, would it be helpful or do you know if the applicant would object to capping the number of, total number of vehicles that could be parked on the site to say 60? I think it would be tough to get 60, but considering that that number's been floated around, would seem reasonable.
I'm just curious where the 60 came from because there's 29 parking spaces, there's a garage, you have to have enough, I don't, maybe we could ask Ms. Blackburn on how many...
So I'm looking at, so I'm looking at Attachment One, page six of 16. There's a October 22nd, 2015 letter from their attorney. If you count up the number of vehicles at the bottom of that letter, I counted 56. Again, I'm not saying that that, that's an, an actual number of vehicles that could be parked there, I'm just saying I think we should cap the number of vehicles, especially since the applicant themselves impose their own cap of 60 or thereabouts. I think I saw the number 60 somewhere else.
I would say closer to 30.
It breaks it out, it breaks it out on page four. If you go to page four, it breaks out the, the, the number of vehicles that they talk about on that attachment one, page four. 29, 12 in the gravel area.
29 already marked spaces, 12 spaces on the gravel area, 10 inside the service bay area, four or five inside the showroom area. That, that's 56. Somewhere else in the, in the material, I saw the number 60. I can't tell you what page it is, but...
Well, do we know how many parking spaces have to be reserved for customers based on the parking ordinance? Or do we need to add that in later today?
Based on the, the parking ordinance there, well, I'd have to, I'd have to check on that. I know for the purposes of the vehicle sales use, they have to have at least 10 spaces designated for vehicles for sale.
Yeah.
Other than that, they do have to, you know, the requirement is at least to have enough parking to cover the square footage of the building. And it doesn't get into necessarily having customer parking versus the display spaces.
Three?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. McPherson showed me also, it's on, on...
How many square feet?
Attachment one, page 10. It also refers to an email indicating there'd be an inventory of 50 or 60 cars. Again, I think that's too much because that doesn't account for, I think the total amount should be 60 or less, including customer parking.
So can you go back to the overhead where you've got all the fancy colors, please?
Hopefully they're still there.
Nope, they're still there. So just so I'm clear, the 29 parking spots that we are talking about include any handicap spots, all the spots to the south, and all the spots to the east, including the customer and, including the display spaces and the employee spaces. Is that correct? Where, the 29 is every marked parking spot on the lot?
The outside, exterior lot spaces that are marked, yes.
That are marked?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so if you take away the customer, not, and to the, to the chair's question, we're sure that the customer parking that they've identified meets the intent of our ordinance with the number of spaces that they need?
The ordinance doesn't necessarily address customer parking versus...
Okay, so they could literally put cars there as well and only have one or two if they needed to.
There's supposed to be three cars per thousand square feet.
Madam Chairman, and Ms., Commissioner Randall?
I'm sorry, thank you.
With regard to how we would allocate parking for this type of activity, DMV requires, as Mr. Zaraf said, a minimum of 10 display spaces. So rest of the parking would be based on the use of the building. So if they, for instance, have an auto or service portion of it, the code says there has to be three parking spaces per service bay. Also, for the office use associated with the dealership, it's parked at three spaces per thousand square feet. So we would look at the allocation of the space within the building to determine how many other spaces are required. Those additional spaces cover employees and any customers.
So, so to follow on with that, so it's a 9,000 square foot location, three per thousand, so it would be...
18.
It depends on what, how much of the building is dedicated to the office use versus how much is for the service.
Okay, and you'd have to break that out as far as they have four bays and then you'd, okay, all right. Probably based on that, then my guess is that these four or five customer spots in the front probably wouldn't be enough. But I, okay, thank you, that very helpful, Mr. Harvey.
I didn't hear any reaction to my suggestion about capping the total number of vehicles.
I love that idea, but I think I'm struggling with the amount, the number, because I want to know, based on this, you know, how many bays do they have? They're required to have three per bay because they're going to be doing service and then they're, they have 9,000 square feet of...
If I could make a comment.
Sure.
Based on the letter, page four of 16 of Attachment One, they had identified that there's 29 spaces marked and that they could get 12 more in the gravel area. That's 41. I would say make that the maximum number of vehicles that can be on the lot outside of the building. I don't think we care how many vehicles they jam inside the building. It's the visual impact of multiple vehicles outside and we don't want them double parking or triple parking because they've got too many cars for sale on the lot. So I, I would propose making it 41 or 40 if you want around it. Maximum number of vehicles on the lot at any one time, including customers, employees, and vehicles for sale. If they can get 30 more cars inside the building, that's, that's their business.
If I may, I, Ms. Rapicella, I agree that there should be a cap. I'm interested to hear from the applicant before we make a final decision, but I do think there's a number that we need to come up with. I think it's prudent to at least put something on there so that we don't have cars parked. So I, I think that may be, what I'd like to do is listen to the applicant and then go from there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Zaraf.
I wasn't done with my presentation.
Oh, you weren't? I'm so sorry. I thought we had so many questions, I thought you were done.
No more questions, I will let you get done and then we'll...
I'm so excited about finishing this presentation.
I know, why aren't you?
We mentioned the signage, additional new signage condition, any new sign, if the applicant installed a sign, would need to have the general appearance similar to this type of monument sign. Then the, the evaluation, there, there are several positives. It's consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan for motor vehicle sales uses, consistent with the established development patterns. Conditions would help minimize impacts on adjacent properties and transportation network and the... adjacent properties and transportation network, and the project will advance needed infrastructure repair, enhancing the overall business center. No apparent negatives, and staff does recommend approval of the application with the new conditions. And on that, if I could go back to condition number eight that was mentioned earlier, just to clarify what change we kind of agreed to on that. Was it, and I'm going to go ahead and read what I have, limit delivery of vehicles to single-vehicle flatbed or tow trucks, and vehicles may be individually driven to the site.
Sounds right to me.
Is that? Okay. I'm done with my presentation.
Sorry about that.
I have one question. Mike, did all the, is required to have everybody around there get a letter asking for his conditional use? Like, were they all notified?
We did notify all of them.
Did you get any feedback from anybody?
We did hear from the one adjacent property owner.
Which one?
Who, the owner of the gas station.
What was their response?
They were concerned about the condition of the access road, and also the potential of vehicles and trucks parking on that access road.
So, nothing from Hampton Inn? Is it Hampton Inn?
Did not hear from Hampton Inn, no.
They never said that, okay. Nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Do you want to clean it off?
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Good evening, Bob Goodall, counsel for the applicant, Jonas Atai, who's with me. First of all, thanks to Mr. Zaraf for his hard work on this, Mr. McPherson for meeting us on the property. I'm going to try to address your questions. Mr. Randall, there are actually three different owners. It's the Hampton Inn, the Valero, and Fast Smart. Oh, how do we put this up? How do you show that thing again?
Can you move the mic down? Can you move the mic down? Yeah.
Okay, so, will this point to things?
He may want to draw. You may want to take all that off there, and then he can...
Here is Hampton, the Valero, and Fast Smart, and on this side is, well, off the map this way is Hampton Inn. The access road is actually on the Valero parcel. It's part of the Valero parcel. It's parcel three in this business park. This is four. We're five. Over here is us. So, the conditions include, incidentally, of course, the Valero, each of the Valero and Hampton Inn probably will generate twenty trips per day for each one of ours. If you just stood there as we did, when Mr. McPherson was there and watched traffic go by, of course, the Valero traffic comes in and off, you know, Route one early on, and never gets back this far. Hampton Inn is pouring in through this place. They are actually the heaviest users by far of this access road, which is on the Valero parcel. With Mr. English's concern, virtually all the vehicles will be self-driveable, or a human driver behind the wheel, but they're operable vehicles that'll come from the Mannheim-Fredicksburg auction. So, this condition, no possible tractor-trailer, you couldn't get one in there anyhow. In response to Mr. Bain's question, that's the aerial photo, I'm not sure when it was taken, when we were out at the site, there's a dumpster back in the back, and the current tenant has brought a big Conex container. That building is stuffed with junk, basically, I mean, there must be some kind way to say it, but it's a price liquidator or something. It just hauls in stuff, and is open on weekends, and people come in and get whatever they want. So, that's leaving when the tenant leaves. Let's see, what else? Ms. Vanek had a concern about the language of the condition. We just don't want to agree that we're prohibited from seeking contribution under this maintenance agreement. I can give you a copy of the maintenance agreement. I think Mr. Wisnewski has, or somebody in his office has vetted. I proposed additional language. I think he edited it to basically say, "We will lose this condition if the road isn't paved. No matter what else happens on, in the history of the world, if the road isn't repaved within the six months, we lose it." We're just not prohibited from getting the contribution.
The county doesn't really, you know, have anything to do with that. They can't encourage you to seek payment or prohibit you, but what we can do is ask you to maintain the road, or to pave it and bring it up to current standards of drivability as part of the CUP. And I will say that we just approved an automotive repair service conditional use permit, expansion, and we had the lady put in a turn lane off of Garrisonville Road. I mean, it wasn't even on her parcel, but because of the traffic influx, and she's going to be responsible for maintaining and putting that turn lane in, which I think is going to cost almost a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, I guess in my opinion, I don't care if you go to them and ask for money or not, I guess that's independent of what, you know, between the maintenance agreement that you have, but the county has no place in allowing you or disallowing you to ask for the money. So, to me, that should, that language should not be in there.
I guess I'm asking you to rely on the county attorney's office concerning that. I just didn't want the language of the condition to be construed as prohibiting us from getting that contribution. In response to Mr. Randall's question...
Okay, so, hold on really quickly. Dan, do we need that language in there to prohibit them, or to not prohibit them from asking for money?
Madam Chairman, I think the answer there is, from the county's perspective, the language could go either way. You're absolutely correct in that. We couldn't enforce the provision requiring them to obtain payment from other neighboring owners. That's why it's stated as a "may." But, the language here still does allow us, the important part is to ensure that that access road is improved. I think what Mr. Goodall's concern is, is if you take out the language concerning contribution by adjacent owners, that might be used against his client in the private matter of obtaining that contribution.
He's exactly right.
No, whether or not that that's a valid argument by the adjacent owners or not, I think is a fair question. I think that Mr. Goodall and his client could certainly state that they have the independent agreement. I haven't seen the terms of that agreement, but that they have the independent agreement that they're trying to enforce, which would, you know, compel contribution. So, but my job is to represent the county. So, from the county's perspective, I think the language could come out. I think it was put in there in effort to just, to try to, as we try to do, is work with the applicant on these conditions, and try to put conditions in there that protect the county, and to the extent possible, not hurt the applicants.
If I could ask a question to follow on that. Does your current maintenance agreement ask for contributions? Do you, do you pool, do they pool the contributions in order to fix that access road? How exactly does that road get maintained currently with the maintenance agreement in place?
It doesn't very well. I've got a copy of it here. There's a recorded agreement in the county. I'm glad to give it to you. It was made when, long ago, many years ago, and it's very, has no specific enforcement terms. It's a very generic term. It says, "These three parties will contribute," says, "will contribute on the ratio of their impervious surface areas." A little bit strange, because it doesn't talk about the actual use of the road or the traffic count, just on the ratio of their impervious surface areas, and that's it. It's just, you know, you shall do it. So, a year and a half ago, the Hampton Inn owner actually called up and was, when we had, I think, initially applied for the conditional use permit, and was starting to complain about it. Mr. Atai located him, it's Mr. Patel, owner of the Hampton Inn. Great, let's go fix the road together. And when they got the estimates, Mr. Patel backed off and said, "No, I don't want to do it." So, it doesn't work very well, and our efforts to resort to it may not produce a penny. We just don't want to be foreclosed from turning to the Valero and the Hampton Inn, which are really the ninety percent, you know, users and abusers of this road, to ask for contribution under that agreement. Either they'll quickly agree, or we certainly won't have a penny within the six months in which we have to pave it all on our own dime, and we're glad to go ahead and do that.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah, just a couple of points. The first thing, I'm looking at a letter, I think from you, Mr. Goodall, dated April twelve, twenty-eighteen. It's attachment, I can't see, attachment one, page six of sixteen, and just in shorthand, it says, "The applicant is willing to be fully committed to pay the entire price to get the job done if necessary if the CUP is approved." So, that's a point I would make. And secondly, again, from my vantage point, this is a private matter between the parties associated with the maintenance agreement. I'm not, and I'm going to throw this back over to Jeff or to our attorney, I've not seen such a stipulation in any condition that we've imposed in the past. And, again, I'm a person who doesn't like to set precedent, so I'd be concerned about putting something in there, again, that we can't enforce, that we can't require, and that ultimately we can't do anything about. So, I appreciate where you're coming from, Madam Chairman. I'm not sure the language is particularly helpful to our purposes.
I agree. Mr. Bain?
Yes, a couple of questions or comments. You just mentioned about getting together with the motel to see if the road could be repaired, and the motel backed out.
That was about a year and a half ago, over some pot holes.
About a year and a half ago. I don't know the timing, but we did receive this letter from Mr. and Mrs. Hoffgard that owned the Valero station, and they, in the letter, indicate that a similar situation occurred, and they paid for the repair, and Mr. Atai refused to, or has never come up with his share. So, this seems to work both ways. You know, it's, Mr. Atai had an opportunity to be a willing member to that agreement and declined it. I think that agreement, pardon my language, sucks. So...
I didn't draft it, I didn't draft it.
I understand. I think with the condition that's in here, requiring Mr. Atai to pay for the paving repair, is kind of, okay, you're getting back what you, or you're paying now for what you should have paid before.
Well, I don't want to interrupt.
I don't know the details of that, but that's the way it strikes me. The concern I have, you indicate that some vehicles will be brought to the site by tow truck, and yet in some of the documentation, I saw that the type of service that you're preparing or providing on-site was changing tires, doing oil changes. If the car can't be driven to the site, other than maybe a flat tire, what kind of repairs are needed that they have to be towed there?
They don't. Virtually, I don't want to completely foreclose a vehicle getting there by some other means, but nearly a hundred percent are going to be driven there under their own power. So, the only, and the condition is, we only work on our own cars. This isn't, you can't bring your car there and have it repaired. Only cars that are owned by the applicant that are there for resale would be the most minor repair. Change the oil, change the tires, change the brake.
Okay, the concern I have is that this could turn into a junkyard for cars. This car comes in, it's missing a bumper, or has no muffler, so it can't be driven, and it sits there for, now with the conditional use, only thirty days, but that's thirty days of a piece of junk sitting there. I don't want that to happen, and I'm wondering if we should add a condition that the vehicles must be repaired promptly, or something to keep it from becoming a junkyard.
Well, you have conditions that were, I think, intended to accomplish that, like, all repairs are going to happen inside, there's no outside storage of an inoperable vehicle. You can't put an inoperable vehicle outside this building, even for a minute.
I think it says pass for longer than thirty days. An inoperable, an inoperable vehicle.
If you go to the, if you go to the new...
It doesn't prohibit outside storage.
If you go to the new conditions that we were given today, fifteen, and I'll read it as it's given to us. "Any outside storage of inoperable or total vehicles shall be limited on-site to a maximum of thirty days."
Okay, I see that, yeah.
And so, the question then, to their point, is if it's only a few inoperable vehicles, could there not be a service bay that would be available for these inoperable vehicles until such time as they are repaired, without leaving them outside?
You could shorten it to five days.
Or make some conditions about shortening the thirty days to a shorter, limited amount of time. I agree with you that it doesn't do, it's not practical or a good practice to bring so many inoperable vehicles to your site, if you're only going to have very limited repair facilities.
Right.
But I would, I question the thirty days.
Make it five.
So...
This is the staff's suggestion. We went along with it, but if you want to shorten it, shorten it.
Okay. All right.
I think five is good.
Five, and then the limit...
Is five really, I mean, five, if they got it on a Saturday, and they might not be able to work on it until the following Thursday, I think that's maybe too short a period of time. I think we need to be reasonable, right?
Seven business days, or...
I'm open to reasonableness. I just wasn't sure that thirty days was, would be the appropriate amount, that's all.
Does Mr. Atai have a thought to this, based on his experience?
How quickly are you repairing your cars?
First of all, we're not going to buy a junk car. I got another dealership. We buy all late-model car, and don't need a lot of repair. First of all, we're not going to deal with the tire. Any car need tire, we're going to send to the tire shop. And I don't remember we fixed any muffler, because all the car is almost new, and don't need a lot of repair. Just maybe some of them, little bit brake job and oil change, and that's it.
So, again, I can think the question is between one and thirty, thirty being too high, one being too low. What is a reasonable amount of time, if we were to put a cap, on the amount of days that an inoperable vehicle could be stored on-site?
Maybe one week, ten days.
Five business days?
Ten days.
Ten days sounds reasonable.
Business days, yeah.
I think business days gets hard, because is it, is it our business days, is it their business?
We open six days a week.
Does ten sound reasonable to you?
No, ten days is fine.
Ten days.
I think ten days is fine.
Okay.
Mr. Atai, I have a question back.
I wasn't quite finished, I'm sorry.
My fault.
Still my turn. The other condition was that outside storage of tires shall be prohibited.
We're not going to deal with the tires.
That's, that's fine. I just don't want other parts of cars, again, bumpers or mufflers to be stored outside, or to be sitting around waiting.
We're not going to do bodywork, bodywork, no bodywork. If car need bumper, we're going to send direct to the body shop.
Okay, can we make that condition, tires or other automotive vehicle parts?
Sure, yeah. We can impose whatever conditions we want.
Okay.
It's whether or not they want to keep going. I guess since, go ahead, I'm sorry. Mr. Bain, are you finished?
I think that was it.
Yes, Bain had one more. He was talking about limiting forty-one outside spaces, which would be fine.
That's what I was bringing up.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's forty-one, a maximum of forty-one cars on the property?
Outside.
Outside.
Outside, yes.
And inside, since nobody can see it?
Inside, we can fit like thirty cars, but we're not going to do that, maybe like, you know, fifteen cars.
You think forty-one's too many?
I do. I think we need to talk about it just for a second.
Okay, well, let's, okay, so let's table that for one second, because I think Mr. McPherson had a question.
Well, my question was exactly what...
Oh, he brought up, okay, all right, then we can, we can move on to the forty-one then. So, Mr. Randall?
Yeah. Do you have the new profit, I'm sorry, the new conditions in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking a little bit about number eight, which we've covered in detail, and then number nineteen. What large trucks, what, I'm sorry?
Refuge collection?
And deliveries by large trucks. What deliveries by large trucks would you infer by that?
None.
That's, that would be my point. My guess would be large trucks would be larger than a tow truck. And so, I understand garbage trucks, those are mandatory, obviously, but I would like to just take out deliveries by large trucks. Refuge collection shall be permitted between the hours of six and ten.
That's fine.
All right, so we minimize the fact of, that we understand that there's going to be no large trucks coming in there, that the largest would be...
Yeah, we need to add that, because there's nothing that says no deliveries by large vehicles. It's only about bringing in the cars, limit delivery of vehicles.
Please.
We, if we order a part, I don't think we can control the size of the delivery vehicle, but I have a hard time believing somebody's going to send, say, a small part, a tractor-trailer. But I'm not sure, I would think UPS, somebody sending something in.
Yeah, that would not be my definition of a large truck. That's, that's...
You're talking about a tractor-trailer?
I'm talking about a six, yes, a tractor-trailer or more than...
Should just be a condition that says no tractor-trailer deliveries.
Okay, something along those lines.
A conditional condition?
Yeah.
We would be happy to agree to it. I don't want to lose...
No, no, I understand, and you're going to order stuff, and FedEx, UPS, I don't consider those large trucks. I don't consider those multi-ax... I don't consider those multi-axle trucks that are going to be up and down that road. The road's probably not like, not prepared for several trips every day of a large, multi-axle truck.
What language would we...
I'm not sure what the proper language would be for that, but...
I thought I heard no tractor-trailer deliveries, that's...
If it's as simple as that, then we just say no tractor-trailers if there's a, that's fine.
That's what we did for Dunkin' Donuts on 17, remember?
So Mr. Zaraf is going back to what you said, just strike out by large trucks. So this number 19 becomes the refuse collection hours.
Yes.
Oh, refuse, well, we're not going to deliver refuse, what do you mean?
Delivery.
Oh, any, okay, so refuse deliveries and, and refuse collection and what?
And deliveries. Shall be permitted between the hours.
Yes.
All right, and then we'll put an additional condition to it that says no tractor-trailers.
Deliveries, like condition number 22, for example, could be no tractor-trailer deliveries.
That's fine with us, I mean, again, I...
No, these are your conditions, not somebody else's. We understand that you are not in control of what somebody sends. If they send you a spark plug in a tractor-trailer, that's out of your, that's out of your control.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Randall, you do understand, like, that if we set that as a condition, that their conditional use permit could be revocable if a tractor-trailer does come to make a delivery.
I would not want that result.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we'd have to get wind of it, but just knowing that that's, you know...
Well...
But to be fair, again, using the Dunkin' Donuts as an example, I don't see how a tractor-trailer could make a delivery on this site. And we've prohibited in the Dunkin' Donuts situation, tractor-trailers or parking on the access road. So this is basically a same set of circumstances.
Mm-hmm.
But apparently tractor-trailers have accessed the site, because whatever that structure was on the aerial photograph had to have gotten there by tractor-trailer, so...
Right, but there were no cars parked there. This is the primary...
I understand, but the fact, the fact that they can get onto the site says to me that at some point in time, somebody's going to try.
A good driver could back in if it had to.
Yeah, yeah, a good driver could get in there. How about if we word that condition, applicant cannot arrange for tractor-trailer deliveries?
That's fine.
Or something along that line.
Is that enforceable, Dan?
It is technically, Madam Chairman, an enforceable condition, but it would be very difficult to enforce. We'd have to be able to have access to communications between the...
You could FOI it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to withdraw that. I think based on what we've talked about, I'm thinking about the fact that have we seen a tractor-trailer in Hampton in parking lot? Have they driven up that access road? Have they made a left-hand turn? Have they gone past this little entrance and have they parked in the Hampton in parking lot?
Well, you got gas deliveries, and they come in on tractor-trailer.
So, I'd like to think that they're not going to get a tractor-trailer that's going to back up into that little parking area that you have. But if we're talking about the access road, we may be best to leave it alone. I would still like to keep the large trucks and deliver, large trucks out of the 6:00 to 10:00. Just leave that alone with what we've changed.
Remove that language in 19.
Yes, but I'm thinking that the tractor-trailer issue may be more problems than it's worth.
All right, any other questions? We had the 40, 41 max spots. Does anybody else have questions, because I have one more?
I have a question about the gravel area. Is, I've seen several places where it seems to be, we go back and forth. Do, is the gravel allowed? It says only in paved parking spots am I allowed to put cars. And then it also accounts that I can put 12 in the gravel area. I don't expect that you're going to line the gravel area so that it's a march out for cars. Is your intent to pave that area where the gravel is so that you can put cars there as per the conditions that we have?
Yes, actually, part of it may be paved already at the south end for the dumpster pad or something.
It's hard to see over the aerial, I understand. Can you point where you think that it's paved already? No, no, on the screen, you can do that on the screen.
Will my finger show up by the point?
No, no, just put it, just use the marker.
I think right here, there's a paved spot for the dumpster. Maybe it's here, is that it? Look just below, look right there, isn't that the dumpster pad right there?
That looks like a concrete pad.
So everything here could be paved, the other area, Mike, is put in green, could be paved.
No, no, I'm just, again, I don't disagree. I'm just looking at condition three. It talks about all outdoor storage of vehicles for sale shall be limited to the parking spaces within the subject parcel. So it needs to be in a parking space.
Yes.
And right now, gravel probably wouldn't meet that requirement.
So we would pave...
You would need to, if you would intend to use that area for parking spaces, you would need to pave that area and mark it as parking spaces.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to make that a condition, Mr. Randall? Is that what you're requesting?
Well, I think it's pretty clear that the condition that says all vehicles for sale shall be limited to the parking spaces within the subject parcel. We can define parking spaces, paved parking spaces, if you would like to do that. It was clear to me what it meant by number three, whatever would be easiest paved. Okay, so let's add, so we will read then, all outdoor storage of vehicles for sale shall be limited to the paved parking spaces within the subject parcel.
Good.
Okay, so, again, I'm confused. What happened to the gravel parking?
It would be paved in order for them to put parking spa, in order for them to park cars there, it would need to be paved.
And striped.
And, yes, and striped.
Okay.
All right, any other questions before I go on to my, I have one last question.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Mr. Itai, Mr. Goodall, so we've made quite a few additions, changes to some of the comments, to the conditions, I've been writing them all down. Do you wish to defer this hearing for you to review all the changes that we've talked about?
And just remember, we still have to have our public hearing part, because we're, this is, we haven't even gotten to that yet.
Right.
He's agreeable to everything he's heard.
Okay.
Okay, and so, my other, I mentioned this earlier, but we haven't addressed it yet. Condition number six, which is the owner may seek contribution language from the neighbors. Are you guys amenable to removing that middle sentence from where it says the owner, and then the last word is obtained?
Could you live with the owner is not prohibited from seeking? Not prohibited, the condition doesn't prohibit us from getting the contribution.
May I suggest some language that we can go in there that maybe lessens the tone?
You can try.
The owner through the current maintenance agreement may solicit support from other property owners.
I just don't think the count, I think it goes to the overall issue, in my opinion, is that we don't have a place or a stake in this game in setting a precedent that we put anything about road maintenance agreements or anything like that in a resol, you know, in a condition. I think that is between them. And I think, at the end of the day, they, you know, you work with your neighbors, and you tell them you're doing, you know what I mean? And if they had paid portions of the road maintenance over years and years, I'm sure the neighbors would probably pitch in and repay for that. But remember, you sell the maintenance, so in five years after cars are driving up and down, up and down, it's going to still be dilapidated, and then they're all going to have to pay again. So this is just a one-time payment from Mr. Itai to bring the road up to acceptable standards right now. Have you, how much have you paid in road maintenance so far?
Paid $500, paid $500 to $800 a couple of weeks ago.
$470, like, a couple of weeks ago.
And that's it?
We never heard from the Hoffmans, so I'm surprised they didn't copy us on it, and he hadn't heard. So everybody...
But I talked with Mr. Patel, and I was ready to, I called the guy, the guy came, and estimated $44,000 to pave everything. And I was ready to pay more than other people, but they said, no, it's too much, too much money.
Do you have an estimate of, as to right now? That's the 44?
Not right now.
Not with the change. He had a 40, roughly $45,000 from Finley in Manassas to repave the 245 feet from Route 1 all the way back to his property. And that's what he went back to Mr. Patel with, who said, gee, seems pretty steep to me, after having said, why don't you contribute? He said, great, let's build it. And Mr. Patel said, no. But we hadn't heard from Hoffman. Everybody may have...
Did you contact Hoffman to see if they would contribute?
We will.
Why would you not?
We will, we intend to. We just don't want to prohibit it from doing that.
And you'll recall that we did discuss this in detail several times on our site visit on Monday, that is a private agreement between you and the other landowners. And it is my belief as well that this language does not belong in a conditional use permit. We're speaking only about conditions and uses. It's not whether I agree or disagree with your situation, it's just what belongs in the conditional use permit.
So, we would be happy to modify the language. I would like to be on the record as saying, I don't construe that is, or I don't want to concede or agree that that omitted language now somehow prohibits us from resorting to whatever rights we have, as poor as they may be, under that pre-existing agreement. We will lose this condition if the road isn't paved. That's crystal clear. We've agreed to that over and over and over again. And the county attorney's actually edited this language to get to what you see. But if that's somehow a roadblock...
To me, it's a deal breaker. But the good news is, you're on camera, and there are written minutes, so whatever you say is being typed out studiously.
Good, so let it, let it say, we're happy to take the language out, as long as we all understand when the county says we're not in the middle, it is not imposing a prohibition against us resorting to whatever rights we may have.
Agreed.
Thank you.
We can't agree, it's the county. Dan's like, no, don't do that, we have no opinion. Okay, so we're...
Anything else?
I think let's, let's open up the public hearing. I don't see anybody in the public, but let's just go ahead and let you guys sit down for a minute and open up the public hearing. So now would be the time for anyone to come forward to the podium to speak on the conditional use permit for Mr. Jonas Itai. You have three minutes to come down to the podium to speak. When the red light turns on, your time is expired. Anyone willing to come down and speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any additional questions for staff or the applicant post the public hearing? I know we did get a letter, does anybody want to read that letter or comment to the letter? Just so they know what the concerns were in the, in the letter that we received?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and read that letter, since this is my district. So we did get a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Hoffgard. "We are writing to object to the application made by Mr. Itai and to change the use of his property to a car dealership. Hoffgard LLC owns 2983 Jefferson Davis Highway. In the past, our property has been adversely affected by the large trucks and vehicles that Mr. Itai has stored on this facility. In addition, in 2016, the road leading to Mr. Itai's property was in disrepair, and we had to take actions to have the road repaired and bear the burden of the cost which Mr. Itai never reimbursed for his portion. We believe that if the application was granted, it would have a significant negative effect on our property. The amount of traffic in and out of the property would cause accelerated deterioration of the road conditions, and it would be unfair for us to have to share in the burden of the upkeep of the road. And for these reasons, we object." And I would like to point out, I think we have addressed some of these items in our discussions this evening.
We have, and I think, have you met with the FastSmart owners or the hotel owners?
No, Madam Chair, I have not.
Okay, but we know that they were noticed. I'm wondering if you want additional time to go and reach out to them. It'd be great to just hear from them what their thoughts are on all the, because we've made robust changes tonight to see if we could get, you know, so at least they understand the changes that were made, and maybe could be a little more supportive of it in understanding the concerns from Mr. Itai, Mr. Goodall regarding the road maintenance. I just, I feel, I know they said in the letter they couldn't be here, so I kind of feel bad that they couldn't be here, and normally, these don't move so quickly. So, I don't know, just my thoughts. Mr. Bain, sure?
Can I ask either Mr. Goodall or Mr. Itai? In that letter, they mentioned that there were large trucks that used that driveway and, I guess, parked on the site. Are those there because of prior tenants of the property? Or were those part of Mr. Itai's operation of the site?
Well, what's been going on for several years is that Mr. Itai's been seeking county approval to use this site for the proposed business that you're now hearing about. But since that wasn't forthcoming, he leased it to a tenant whose use was permitted by right in this zone, and I suspect whatever the Hoffgards are talking about are delivery trucks to this tenant who has this thing that they do on weekends, the price cutter discount thing, whatever.
So based on the conditions that we've talked about tonight, the probability of large trucks using that road for Mr. Itai's purposes would be very limited, very limited.
That's going to be near zero.
All right.
Those are, those are trucks serving the current tenant, that lease ends in February. We can hardly wait to end it.
All right, thank you.
You, before you go, I think we, some of us might still have questions. You said something that kind of made my ears perk up a little bit. You said that you had been seeking a conditional use permit for this proposed use for years, and you, it wasn't forthcoming, so what does that mean?
We applied in 2015, the then-supervisor for the district simply said, I don't like this use, and that was all we heard. So we just simply deferred and waited. Ms. Shelton's now the supervisor and was willing to, met with us and was willing to entertain it progressing on its merits under the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance for which we are thankful. So that was under, it was under Mr. Milde, while Mr. Milde was the supervisor for the district. So we simply waited.
And were there any reasons given that, the traffic, the road maintenance?
No, he didn't, he didn't like the idea of additional auto dealerships in the area.
And I saw a letter to Ms. Bailey, did you ever meet with Ms. Bailey in the past?
We did, we met with her right after the application was filed. She was just kind enough to meet us at the site, went over it, had brief correspondence, and then just put it into orbit, circling the airport, waiting. Since Mr. Milde was forthcoming, forthright, he said, I just oppose it, politically don't want it. And so we waited, and Ms. Shelton's now the supervisor and was, met with us and was glad to entertain it on the merits. So we're glad to have it heard on the merits. We're glad we have a staff report that has all positive conditions and no negative conditions and recommends approval.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Could you tell me what the square, the overall square footage is, 9,000 square feet?
I think that's the building.
That's, that's the building, I'm sorry. The office space that you're talking about, that first, that's the farthest to the west, how much of that is, how much of office space, 2,000, 3,000 square feet? Do you know offhand?
The office space is upstairs, it's in the second floor.
Okay.
I think that's 3,000, I think. So by far, the commission of revenue has a drawing of this thing, I'm not sure I have it with me, unless it's in the package. So the service bay area is by far the largest, and that's on the left or west end. That's by far the largest space.
So the area underneath is the showroom, then? Is that the showroom?
Yes, and the offices are above it.
Offices are above, okay.
Mr. Randall, I'm just going to circle back with one of the comments you made earlier. You had said you wanted to come back to the 41 outside cars stored. Did you, are you okay with the 41 being stored, limiting it to 41 outside? But I can't remember if you had an issue with the number 41.
I did, I think, I think...
I thought it was total spaces outside, because we have to get customers and employees there, too. It's a total outside spaces.
Right.
It's 29.
No, no, the 41, if you pave, the most you could, the most spaces you could put outside, not just display total, so you got to get customers and employees in there, too.
Yeah, but if you just limit it to the total number of vehicles outside, I would say 29 on existing pavement, and 12 if, or however many they can get on the gravel. But I think that's what we said, that they have to be paved parking spaces.
Right.
They do.
In number three, we didn't really, that doesn't set a number, but it says that it's got to be paved, in which case they have to be striped according to county code, and that would probably limit them to 41.
Yes.
Okay. I would agree with that.
Does, does they have to be pa, striped? Jeff?
Madam Chairman, in order to be classified as a parking space, yes. It has to be striped.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Mr. McPherson, this is in your district. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a motion. I move that we approve, recommend approval of conditional use permit 15150822 and Resolution 18-186 with the following changes to the conditions that were delivered earlier, and I will read them out. From condition number six, we will remove what I call extraneous language about reimbursement from other property owners and leave the language just to talk about repair of the roadway. For condition number eight, vehicles, we add the word individually. Vehicles individually may be driven to the site. We will be limiting parking to forty-one vehicles outside of the building. Condition number fifteen, we're going to change thirty days to ten days for inoperable vehicles outside. Condition seventeen, we're going to add not only tires outside, but other vehicle parts. Condition number nineteen, we're going to remove the language by large trucks, since that is not needed. And then condition number three, we're going to add the word paved to parking areas. And Madam Chair, that ends my motion and the changes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
So a motion by Mr. McPherson, second by Mr. Appicella. Mr. McPherson, any additional comments?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, I did meet with the applicants on site Monday, and we talked through a lot of the conditions. And just based on the merits, I think that this use for this space is well within the conditional, set forth in the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Appicella?
I, I would just add that with the additional conditions that have been incorporated, I think we've addressed the concerns that were mentioned, at least by the person who submitted a negative comment, and generally, any other issues that might arise with those additional conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Appicella. Anyone else like to comment? Mr. Randall?
I'd like to make a quick comment. We, I was torn on this for a long time, from the time I got it to the time we are sitting here about used car lots. You get a used car lot definition, and you get a, a picture in your mind about what they've become, what they are. We can't obviously condition what kind of cars, but I, I'm going to hold you to the fact that they're going to be late model, good used cars, that people aren't going to, you know, and they're not coming for the 1980 Chevy type thing, in that it meets those types of standards so that we don't become other places on 610 or on Jefferson, if, if you know what I mean. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Anyone else like to comment?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to have to vote no against this, because I feel like, we just went through this with Derek Lane, and we've had issues with him with attracting trails, bringing cars in. And I just feel like this is going to be an issue because of the hotel right there. And I just think there's going to be a, a problem, and also just another car lot on Route One. So I'm going to have to say no to this.
Thank you, Mr. English. Any other additional comments? All right. I am going to make a brief comment. I really do appreciate your amendability and, and accepting some of the conditions that we've, we've suggested this evening. And I know Mr. McPherson worked with you guys ahead of time to address some of the issues. I, too, like Mr. Randall, have been torn on this. And I think for me, I feel like we're moving just a little bit too fast. I don't really like making conditional changes and then, and voting on it right away so we can see it. Sometimes it's, it's better to see the, the actual final language to understand exactly what we're, we're voting on, to make sure that we didn't miss anything or impose unintended, unintended consequences. And for me, not being able to hear from the neighbors, you know, other than just that letter and, and following up with them to, to ensure that this, the conditions imposed tonight or edited tonight would address their concerns of the issues that they've had previously. So I am going to join Mr. English and, and vote no, just because I think we're moving a little bit too fast. If I had a little more time to kind of digest it, my vote may be different. But I'm not sure that that matters. You may have enough support, I don't know. But I just want to make sure we don't create any unintended consequences in any of the things we've done tonight. So, so that's, that's my big issue. So, thanks. All right. Go ahead and vote. All right. The motion carries for two with one abstention or recusal. Mr. Boswell was absent. Thank you, guys. Okay, so this evening, there is no unfinished business, so we can move on to new business, which is the Piedmont groundwater plan presentation, which we will recognize Mr. Zaraf for this.
Okay. Good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Mike Zaraf, the planning and zoning department. This item is a consideration of comprehensive plan amendment, specifically groundwater resource evaluation for the Piedmont aquifer, otherwise referred to as the Piedmont Plan. So the request tonight, or the consideration is for the planning commission to authorize a public hearing to amend the comp plan to incorporate it, incorporate the Piedmont Plan as a component of the groundwater management plan element of the comp plan. Piedmont Plan is focused on the Piedmont aquifer portion of Stafford County. This map helps to define the area. The map identifies the two primary physiographic regions or geologic zones in the county, the Piedmont Province and Coastal Plain Province, also referred to as aquifers. The, the zones are divided by the fall line, which generally runs north-south in the vicinity of Interstate 95. The Piedmont aquifer consists of hard-resistant igneous rock. Groundwater flow is affected by fractures in the rock formations and at various locations and depths. In the coastal plain, this consists of more sand and gravel consistency with, and what you get is a more consistent groundwater table. As a result, water wells are more reliable in the coastal plain than you find in the Piedmont aquifer. Study further subdivides this Piedmont aquifer into geologic units as the type and characteristics of rocks across the region vary slightly. This map helps to further define the affected areas of this plan. This overlays the urban service area from the comp plan that's identified with the pink hatching. These areas are planned to be served by public water. And in addition, the study area excludes Quantico Marine Corps Base. So the evaluation is focused on the remaining area in light brown, where the majority of wells exist and future wells are planned. So for some history, in 2005, the first groundwater management plan was adopted. The impetus for that plan was the experience of prolonged drought conditions during 2001 and 2002. At that time, there were a number of domestic wells that experienced low or no water yield conditions. The study evaluated wells across the county at that time as part of this plan in both the Piedmont and Coastal Plain. The plan document concluded that there was adequate groundwater capacity for the future planned growth in the county. Strategies were recommended for protection of the aquifer recharge area, which basically follows along the fall, the fall line. So now, fast forward to 2017. There were concerns expressed in Hartwood and Rock Hill of no or low yield conditions again, and existing wells being impacted by new adjacent developments. Both the Hartwood and Rock Hill election districts comprise a majority of the Piedmont aquifer located outside of the urban service area. Since 2005, there has been a substantial amount of development of new homes with private wells in the Piedmont aquifer. The board supervisors had concerns about the sustainability of the groundwater supply in the aquifer and authorized development of the new groundwater evaluation. Plan was prepared by geotechnical consultant, yet ECS Mid-Atlantic. So the, the plan has several findings. I'll go through those. The Piedmont aquifer has a capacity for 6,500 new household wells. This would be without causing significant negative impacts to the Piedmont area's hydrologic system. The comp plan project, projection is for 200 new dwelling units per year outside of the urban service area. Most of these homes withdrawing groundwater from private wells. The 200 new dwelling units, it does include all the areas in the county outside of the urban service area, in both the Piedmont and Coastal Plain aquifers. The 200 dwelling units per year do amount to 3,600 total units during the planning horizon of the comprehensive plan out to the year 2036. As a result, the groundwater aquifer, aquifer capacity for the Piedmont would be adequate over the next eighteen years of projected growth. The low-yielding wells still have been observed through the evaluation of well records that were cataloged and mapped. And the study correlated low yields with the varying geologic rock strata for this, for the Piedmont area. And also, it's identified that newer wells do have a slightly higher yield than older wells that were drilled prior to 2000, the year 2000. Finding that, that increased well development generally does not adversely impact recently installed well yields.
Mr. Zaraf, I have a question for you. Is there a compare, is there an analogy or a comparison between the, how deep those wells are and whether or not we're, we're digging deeper wells since 2000 and prior to 2000?
They talked a little bit about that, I believe. It was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Harvey, but the, the wells that were dug deeper were basically in situations where they had to go deeper to find adequate water. Where, you know, wells that were not dug as deep generally were.
Are the ones having the problems?
They had enough, because they didn't have to go to the deeper, deeper depths.
And Commissioner Randall, part of the depth of wells is a function of what the production of that well is, because state health department requirements are that a well must produce a minimum of three gallons per minute of water supply. In order to have storage for that three gallons per minute, oftentimes, the well will be driven deeper, so there's water storage within that well itself that can be pumped out to meet that requirement. Otherwise, the homeowner would have to put in a water storage tank within their house.
Okay. No, I was just, I was just wondering if, if the low-yielding wells were seen to be the ones that weren't drilled as deep? That's all I was wondering. If there was an analogy to that. Thank you.
And then the report does classify well yield potential for each of the geologic units as, and they define it as low, moderate, or high yield situations. This map is included in the plan. It identifies the classifications. It does overlay roadways onto the map in order to, for the public to gain a better understanding of, of the situation in, in their specific location of concern. This was one of the recommendations that came out of town hall meeting that was conducted by the supervisors regarding this, this issue and this study. The plan notes that these yield classifications are averages across each of these geologic units, and it does not guarantee that you're going to specifically get that type of yield, because there are variations that likely exist within each of the, of the areas.
Mike, I'm sorry, can I take you back? I apologize. The, the version of the plan that I have is dated February 2nd, and the staff report refers to a recommendation being made to incorporate an additional map of the low-yield well areas with roadways superimposed on them. Is that this map in front of us?
That's this map, yes.
Where is it in the document?
I think it's the very last, one of the very last pages. It was added at the end.
So if somebody were looking for it online, can you cite a page number? One second. I mean, I think it's important information.
Attachment one, page 319 of 319.
So it is the actual, very last page?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So the plan does include some recommendations or suggested best management practices. It talks about establishment of groundwater monitoring wells. Using monitoring wells to measure long-term groundwater levels is identified as an effective way to kind of differentiate short-term kind of fluctuations of conditions, drought, from overall long-term trends. The report does identify potential sites within the county where wells might be located and provide some estimated costs and information regarding installation and ongoing data collection costs, if the county was to kind of pursue this type of effort. They, the sites they identified were available kind of public sites, school sites or parks, where it, where they're, these wells could potentially be located. Also, the plan does provide some information, provided on hydrologic testing standards and groundwater regulations. These have been identif, adopted by several counties in the Piedmont region as, as a specific land use tool. Provides a, kind of a higher level of evaluation of, of the groundwater situation prior to residential development occurring. And staff does recommend authorizing a public hearing for August 15th. The time limit for recommendation from, because of the comp plan amendment would be September 3rd. So you do have only one more meeting to, to have your public hearing on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Zaraf. Any questions?
I had a question. The, they said in the report about the maximum safe yield calculations estimated that an additional 6,500 households beyond what exists could withdraw groundwater at a typical residential usage rate without causing significant negative impacts. How did they evaluate the location of the 6,500? Were they looking at it evenly spread across the Piedmont region? Or did they use the comprehensive plan to identify areas of higher density versus lower density?
I'd have to look into that.
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Bain, as part of the analysis, the consultant did an overall water budget and looked at what the overall water budget could yield. There's no relationship between the location of what the, where those future wells would be. That's one of the areas of concern, as you, and you read in the report. For the areas identified on the map, as you recall, they're in red, which have the low well yields. There's significant concerns, especially up in the Rock Hill area, around Lake Arrowhead and those neighborhoods in that vicinity. Because of the density of homes and the overall tightness of the rock that leads to the low well yields, it could be potentially exacerbating some of the problems. So a lot of this comp plan document is information for future decision-making by future prospective home builders and citizens of the county. But it does not provide any specific guarantees that there's going to be adequate water in a specific location.
The reason I'm raising the question, obviously, we've been talking about cluster developments, and whether it's a cluster development or a large development with a homeowners association and private community wells, they're going to be drawing much larger amounts of water from the aquifer and could experience severe low yield or no yield conditions just because of their own use. Is there any way that the county could require some type of analysis by developers prior to approving a development plan? That the developer has to prove that there would be sufficient yield for whatever development they're proposing?
Yeah, that, that would actually be through the, the measure that I had mentioned, the kind of. of establishment of hydrologic testing standards as an actual requirement, possibly in the subdivision ordinance.
Okay. I thought that was just testing that the county would do, but you're saying that that would actually be part of the...
That would be something that would be imposed on the development to evaluate the site up front.
It's a recommendation, though, right? Not a requirement?
Yeah.
That would be excellent.
But if it came part of the ordinance, it could potentially be a requirement.
And the cluster ordinance, is that what you're talking about?
Through any, whether it's a cluster or conventional...
Write that down for August 29th.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Appicello?
Aside from the point that Mr. Bain just reinforced about the 6,500 number being, I'll call it non-problematic, although some may see it differently depending on where they're having their house built. The other big conclusion I thought I read here was, and it's a general statement, it may not apply in all cases, but that newer wells tend to be less problematic than older wells. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
With regard to the referral, were we given any ability to make any changes? Or is this ultimately an up or down vote post the public hearing?
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Appicello, the resolution that the board passed did not allow for changes to the document. It requests the commission to hold your hearing and make recommendations.
Well, let me ask a technical question. If we recommended a page be moved somewhere else in the document, would that be outside the scope or something that we would have to just make as a general recommendation that the board could act on when it considers the matter?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Appicello, that would be part of the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. I'll just put out there, I think this low-yield well map is pretty important, and to put it at the back end probably doesn't, does not, may not as well serve prospective builders and buyers going forward. So that would be something I'd put as a placeholder or something we want to talk about.
And Commissioner Appicello, for your information, that map exists elsewhere in a document, but the reason why staff put it at the end is because it was asked that we put roads on that document, and when you compare it with the other map that's already in as a listed figure, it got to be awkward as far as formatting because you'd have the exact same map side by side. The only difference is one has roads on it and one doesn't.
Yeah, but the roads kind of give you a sense of where things are. I don't have the two in front of me, but I'm sort of thinking out loud that if I were buying somewhere and I was going along a road and someone was building over there and I see a little dot that says this might be problematic, it might, you know, cause me to do a little bit more investigation. So that road, that information, I think, might be helpful to somebody. I'm just throwing it out there. I know it's not something we'll deal with today, maybe as part of our recommendation.
Probably a recommendation to replace the map with the version with the roads is, if everything else is the same.
Right, and put it in a prominent place where folks can easily find it.
And that won't impact, Dan, this is a question for you, the advertising of public hearing if we vote to send this forward tonight?
Madam Chairman, there would be no impact.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Giraffe? Remember, we're just voting this to go to public hearing.
I do have a related question. Would we still be in compliance, or is there a way that we could schedule this for our meeting? When is it, August 28th or August 29th?
29th, I think.
In lieu of our next regularly scheduled business meeting? That would still be prior to September 3rd. Is that permissible?
Yes, sir.
So I'd throw that out there as an option.
I like it. You going to make a motion to send this to public hearing on August 29th?
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to send the document forward to public hearing to be heard at the August 29th, currently scheduled planning commission meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Appicello, second by Mr. Bain. Mr. Appicello, any comment?
No, ma'am.
Bain?
No.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead and vote. You getting used to not voting, Mr. Boswell? All right. Motion carries 7-0. Exactly. Now moving on to item number three on the agenda, amendment to the zoning ordinance for required loading spaces and required parking spaces. For this, we recognize Ms. Andrea Hornung. I like your suit this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, and members of the commission. Not to reiterate a lot of the items that you've already seen before, but basically the parking and drive aisle ordinance for repealing the loading space table and amending the 7.1 parking table, that was sent to you by the Board of Supervisors to request the planning commission to schedule a public hearing. And out of the board's meeting, a few things came up that they recommended be considered. One item was Supervisor Shelton asked that the number of parking spaces for hotels and motels be revised for one space per room, which that basically puts it back to the original. So in the staff report, you'll see that there's a minor table in there to show you what was requested by the committee of one per two beds, and then it was revised and changed back to one space per room. None of the loading spaces were affected at all throughout all this. And then Supervisor Cohen also recommended that the minimum parking space size, excuse me, is revised to nine by 20. Now, in consideration of that, the county also received a letter from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality in which when they were looking at the Chesapeake Bay program, they noticed that, they looked at certain projects as well within the county, and their recommendation was to reduce impervious surface. And some of the options to accept that, to reduce impervious surface in the county, would be to revise the parking spaces. And some of the items that staff came up with were to revise parking space size. Now, although Mr. Cohen recommended nine by 20 spaces, you could possibly accomplish both of those by doing a percentage, creating a percentage of small, standard parking spaces, compact car parking spaces, and then larger vehicle parking spaces. And in a calculation that staff completed, we looked at 100 spaces. Obviously, some of this will not work for a site like you just saw that might have 40 spaces. So it would only work for maybe more than 100 or maybe even larger, like some other projects that we have going on where there's 800 spaces. So the calculation for different percentages could save up to two spaces or three spaces if your requirement is, your minimum requirement for the site is 100 spaces. Another...
Do we know why Mr. Cohen asked for the nine by 20 versus the eight by 18? What's the...
To accommodate larger vehicles because we're seeing SUVs in addition to other types of larger vehicles that once you have the larger doors and it's just a larger vehicle and a parking space. And if you have an...
I mean, I think it's a fair point. I see that at the VRE.
Right.
Where I see the large trucks going outside, both the front and the back end of a space. But not every, I mean, it would be way too large for, you know, the average-sized car. So I appreciate what staff's recommending. My only concern is what staff's recommended, it's not necessarily based on anything that you've seen, it's just something you've kind of threw out there as a possibility. Could be that, you know, maybe you want 20% or 25% for large vehicles or 10%. We don't really know because we're not, we weren't provided any examples. Is that a fair statement?
Well, the information that's in the staff report is not necessarily a recommendation for staff. It's information provided to you based on the comments from the Board of Supervisors and their recommendations and then some other...
That's not what I mean. So I'm talking about the percentage ratio that was recommended by staff. I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, I think maybe you mentioned 15% large vehicles, and I don't have it in front of me. There was a ratio that was recommended, but I'm saying there was, it was not based on a specific set of examples. It was just a hypothetical to get us talking about it.
Correct. The hypothetical, because if the DEQ letter to the county recommended reducing impervious surface, there's got to be some other ideas that the county needs to look at, how do we accomplish reducing impervious surface? One idea is to reduce or to attack, to deal with parking spaces. So either you revise the parking space requirement and look at different sizes for larger developments that will require a significant number of parking spaces, or you could also require maximum parking spaces. Now, in staff's research with that, and also to clarify what's in the staff report, we did receive some examples from Arlington and Alexandria that looked at parking spaces, but truly only the city of Alexandria outlined a procedure for maximizing their parking spaces. So in the one, I believe it was attachment three, in that one document, it actually combines the city of Alexandria information as well as Arlington County. Arlington County has some information on parking spaces, but only the city of Alexandria discusses assigning a maximum parking space requirement to their developments. You also have another document that was presented to you this evening that was found as staff went to the internet, and it discussed different areas in the continental United States that offers maximum parking spaces. The only one, obviously, was the city of Alexandria and Montgomery County. They did have information on requiring maximum parking spaces. Also, on the reverse side, the other localities are Chicago and Illinois, Boston and Massachusetts, and San Francisco, California. So those are some larger cities that did provide maximum parking spaces. That's an option. Also, another option would be pervious pavement. Now, staff did find a number of documents on the internet that we have, but we did not provide all of those to you because this is part of a talking point as well. But there are options for pervious pavement, but we have some areas in the county that pervious or permeable pavement does not work in a high-traffic parking area.
Would the Chipotle original parking lot be an example of pervious pavement where they didn't pave it all the way in the beginning? It was just grass and mud?
Which one?
Madam Chairman, in that particular case, they use what we would call grass rings or...
It was a terrible idea.
Other types of ideas for allowing for infiltration. Unfortunately, grass won't grow in a high-traffic area, and that's where that system failed. There's also pervious pavement that's actually somewhat like concrete, but allows the rainwater to soak in and then usually have an underlayment of gravel or some other pervious material that allow the water to infiltrate into the ground. Currently, our code does not allow for pervious pavement to count towards parking requirements. It specifically says it's got to be asphalt or concrete. So one option that staff can recommend is that we include in our code a provision that we allow pervious pavement subject to agent approval. In other words, the site plan agent, which is currently myself acting on behalf of the county administrator, could determine that pervious pavement could be allowed in certain circumstances. As we know, with high-traffic areas, as Ms. Hornung was saying, and we've experienced in that one instance, they don't work very well for pervious pavement where you have a lot of vehicle traffic or truck traffic.
And I have seen those YouTube videos of the pavement where the water just gushes, it goes right through and it drains, and they talk about putting those in like high-flood areas because the water can just kind of soak right through versus tearing through the pavement. But anyway. Mr. Bain, did you have a question?
Well, I think we're sort of talking about two different things, parking space sizes and impervious cover. And I wanted to get back and just make a comment about parking space sizes. I've been involved in some projects that tried to do that, had compact cars, areas, and then regular cars, and they tend to work all right during low-use times, but during high-use times, like around the holidays, they'll park a bus in those compact spaces, and there's just no control of it. You have very little opportunity because the person comes, parks, and leaves their car. If the parking attendant comes and says, "Well, that shouldn't be there," there's no way to get them to move it. So I think having various sizes, while it's a nice idea, it's just not very effective. So...
I agree. In kind of moving with the DEQ recommendations, I understand how important that is, and I saw the report, they had several different recommendations. I just am not sure how that's going to reduce impervious cover unless we were to build structures upwards, like vertical structures, or we put in something that said if you're going to cover X amount of space, like if you're going to have more than 1,500 spaces, then you have to go through an additional level of approval to determine the appropriateness of those spaces. You know what I mean? So then they can work with us to determine how we reduce those DEQ issues on impervious cover. I don't even know if we can do that. I just don't want to jump the gun and say, you know, I feel like if you make one space bigger for a Tahoe and then a space smaller for a Prius, kind of equals out to be almost the same thing.
That would only work when it's larger, a larger quantity of spaces, because obviously if it's smaller, it's not going to work. If it's a project, well, we did 100, and we used a percentage, and that's how we came up with, we saved two spaces or we saved three spaces, and that might be negligible on 100 spaces, but if you multiply that by 10, it might work. But then you also have the option, not only the percentages, the maximum units, the pervious pavers, but then you also have the opportunity that if they exceed the minimum requirements and they want more parking, I'm not sure, but you could also put a requirement for having structured spaces, whether it be underneath the building or you have parking decks. We haven't seen anybody in the Commonwealth of Virginia that requires that, that if you exceed the minimum requirement, that you have to build a structured parking facility. The only thing we found was they talked about facilities in general, surface parking and tiered parking. And if you do this, then you can do this, or if you're near a metro stop, then you have shared parking. And so they had different scenarios, but nobody, we didn't find anywhere that specified that if you exceeded the minimum parking requirements, you had to build a parking deck. We did not find any information related to that.
And I think here in Stafford, a lot of the developers actually come to minimize their parking, so I think in a way, the parking ordinance kind of does already limit impervious cover by recommending how many spaces, kind of giving them a guideline. And in certain areas, we allow exceptions when they come to us, just like we just did with PT&amp;D, for example, to reduce that pervious or impervious cover to be more in line with the DEQ recommendations. I think that's just a really hard one to sort of follow.
Madam Chairman, just kind of springboarding off of that. So what DEQ has come forward with, I think, is very laudable, but it's not a mandatory requirement. It's not something we're being forced to do. It's a recommendation. Is that correct?
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Appicello, that is correct. DEQ said we need to address these issues. They didn't say how. They give us the latitude on how to deal with them, and we can choose a menu of options. So these were some of the talking points the staff pointed out as areas where we could go. We're not limited to that. So one of the things, too, to note, looking at our parking space sizes, it's similar to our parking table in that it sets a minimum threshold. So for instance, our ordinance says the minimum parking space size is eight and a half feet wide by 18 feet long, but that doesn't prohibit a developer from building a nine-by-20 space. They could do that all day long if they want to, based on our current code.
Right, but again, the bottom... Right. But again, the bottom line is if we, the other thing I would point out is, based on your research thus far, putting aside the outside of Virginia examples you provided, I think really just one in New York City and one in San Francisco, in terms of Virginia, you only found in one locality, it was a city that had some
Their parking stinks.
Some maximum levels identified, although, when I looked at it, I really couldn't find any rhyme or reason to how they got to the maximum number. There wasn't some, you know, uniform ratio that they used, so I'm just not sure how they arrived at it. And that's what concerns me, and that's kind of how I normally do business, is I look to see how others, first, in our general region, have addressed a specific issue, and then failing that, you know, widening the scope to see what other Virginia localities have done. And I don't really see this being an issue throughout the Commonwealth. So that's kind of the, I'm trying to wrap my head around what they're asking for versus what folks are actually doing, and there doesn't seem to be this drive to establish a maximum number of parking spaces. And then I also ask myself, if I look across Stafford County, are we seeing a lot of places where, hey, this is what we said is the minimum, but they're, you know, they're building 150% of what we said should be the minimum? Are we seeing that anywhere in Stafford County?
Most of the time, through past experience being employed with the county, the parking requirements, the developers typically want to provide less, because less parking, more parking means less building. So, and in other respects, there are...
In fact, that was a comment you received when you guys were going through this process of
Correct.
Looking at parking spaces, some folks in the development community wanted to reduce it from the minimums we had already in place. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We did receive comments that in some uses, we had required an excessive amount of parking.
So again, for me, while I think what DEQ is asking for, again, is very noble and very laudable, but I think we could be getting ahead of ourselves without having enough information to know what the right ratios are broadly, and even more so if we start looking specifically at, you know, specific uses. So I'm not quite sure what would happen. I mean, I know the board asked us to take another look at this, but I'm not sure we're at a point or have enough information, Madam Chairman, to really arrive at maximum parking levels at this point in time.
No, I agree.
I do want to mention that in Section 28102, there is a statement in there that does say any parking spaces exceeding the number of required may be designated as compact car spaces with a minimum width of eight by 15. So there is that option. If they wanted to exceed the minimum requirement, they could make those spaces compact cars, so that the actual square footage and the size would be less than the eight-and-a-half by 18. It would be eight by 15, I think.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
You know, to go back to the original comment, I, having driven a truck for 25 years, I'm a big believer that most parking spaces aren't designed for anything larger than a standard car, especially as we've gotten farther along, and the trucks get bigger and bigger, and the cars get bigger and bigger. Try to park in a commuter lot with a couple of trucks next to each other, and there's very, very little room to maneuver. I'm a big believer in the larger parking spots. Maybe there's some way we can identify a percentage that says, okay, you know, 25, 25, 50. I don't know how we get to that percentage, but I do think there is some merit to the larger size of parking spaces. And I'd like to talk more, maybe later, maybe after the public hearing, maybe as to what those percentages would be. But I'm all in favor of looking at raising, increase in the size of those parking spaces.
So this is a question for you, Dan, really quickly, just to address his concern. If we were to move this to public hearing, and then we increase the size of the parking space, are we in an advertisement issue?
Madam Chairman, potentially, yes. I'd have to see exactly what we have now and what the proposed number would be. My recommendation, it sounds like there is a lot of variances, the ideas here for how to address this issue. So I would recommend maybe not advertising the public hearing at this point, unless staff feels strongly about
We have to. It's our last meeting before our deadline. The deadline's September 21st, and I think if we vote August 29th, we don't hit the advertising timeline for the September 12th meeting.
Madam Chairman, I believe you're correct, and I've omitted, I've forgotten the fact that the Planning Commission is planning on canceling its August 15th meeting.
You ruined my thing in my chairman's report. Yeah.
Well, and that has to be said, then, as part of this conversation. I believe that is correct. Your second meeting in September is...
The second meeting in September would be the 26th. So the commission would have to hold its hearing on September 12th.
We could just advertise that the spaces be larger, and then we could always go down, like, so if we said that the spaces needed to be nine by 20 or whatever you said it was, we could always reduce that percentage down to 5%, 3%. We can't go up, but we can go down.
Madam Chairman, I believe that is a correct statement. It would be a less onerous change.
So that would solve all the problems.
Well, just kind of a hybrid of that. So let's just say hypothetically, moving forward, we decided to advertise at a larger level, but then decided we wanted to do some ratio where it's 10 or 25% of the spaces are that higher number, and the rest are some smaller number. Would that still be in conformance with the advertising?
I think we might have flexibility if there are certain recognizable alternatives that are in consideration. I think it can be advertised in the alternative to say, you know, this is one option that might be adopted at the hearing, but there's this other option as well.
We'd have to specify the outcome.
Yes, you would have to specify, to some reasonable degree. You can't, you don't have to forecast the outcome. So I know that in the past, there have been times when even entirely alternative ordinances have been advertised as options.
So we could advertise that we're considering increasing the size to nine by 20, or using a percentage breakdown to allow for larger as well as compact spaces, but still maintain the total impervious cover.
I believe that you could, that could be done.
Right. Do we have to specify a percentage on that latter point, or can we just broadly say that we're looking at a mix?
Not being as familiar as the planning and zoning staff with the different percentages and alternatives involved, I do believe that you could, probably the safest way is to state a range for a percentage.
Zero to 100. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Randall, I would just ask, as we kind of noodle this a little bit, it would seem to me that there would be a minimum, there should be a floor on the number of spaces to start with if you're going to potentially impose a percentage ratio. So I think they used 100. I don't know if that's the right number, maybe it's 50, but certainly a parking lot with 30 spaces, you know, I think
I would agree that you would need to have some minimum number of spaces in order for this to be, if we made a percentage, if we made them all the same, all of them nine by 20, then it would account for any space that's ever been built from here on. If we do a percentage, then we would say, you know, a minimum of 50 lots, the following percentages apply.
Can we also say that the larger spaces have to be closer up?
Yeah.
Because I drive a big car, too.
Right next to the front door. I wasn't going to say that, but I'm all for that, then, yes.
We're going to get stuck way in the back now.
Exactly. Get those compacts signs. It's a pumpkin big truck. Right here. So, yes, I would agree that there would need to be some minimum number of spaces in order for those percentages to be applicable. I don't know, do we need to decide that now in order to move this forward?
Yeah. What I'm hearing is we have to move something forward tonight for a public hearing in order to meet the deadline, so we'd have to come to some finality on what that looks like.
Does staff have a recommendation for a number of, a minimum number of parking spaces that these percentages would be applicable?
We only looked at 100. We didn't look at 500. We didn't, we didn't look at a percentage of, if the minimum requirement of parking spaces are 100, do we, and you want to build 200 spaces, do we say, if there's a percentage over the minimum requirement, do you go into that scenario where you divide up the percentages? So there's different ways to look at a percentage of parking spaces, either the percentage for minimum requirements or a percentage for maximum requirements.
Right.
So there's a lot of options that is there for you to decide what you'd like.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. That helps.
We're open?
Here's what I would recommend, if I could. I would recommend, as I think about the different restaurants that I have, restaurants are the first thing to come to mind, I think most of them roughly are in the 35 to 50 range, especially if you go to Stafford Marketplace, those, the restaurants right there. So I would, I would use minimum as, 50 as a minimum. Anything less than 50, anything more than 50 would need to have some percentage of larger parking spaces.
I know what you're going to say.
I think, I just tried to kind of discuss this with our county attorney, and the way advertising requirements work is, you can't be more restrictive than the advertisement going forward if you make a final decision, but you can be less restrictive. So I think if we started with a higher number, say 100, and decided that 50 was the floor, that would be
Would that be less restrictive or more restrictive?
Think of it the opposite, because you're saying when you have 50 spaces...
It has less impact.
Okay.
It's the other way around.
Okay.
So I would suggest 100. We'll probably get to 50 or 40, but I'm just saying, we would preclude ourselves of going to a higher number if that's where, you know, we go to a public hearing and people say, "Hey, that's not going to work."
I agree. If that's the case, I have to look at, yes, then let's start with 100, then, and that gives us an option of...
Do you have a breakdown of percentages if we start with minimum requirement of 100 spaces for a development?
I would, same point. I would, I don't think 25 is the right number, but I would start with 25 for large trucks. We'll probably get to a smaller number, probably down to 10 or 15%, but we'd have that flexibility to do it. Well, we don't have to, we don't have to do that.
Or just 25?
That other part of it deals with DEQ's issue. And I agree with Mr. Bain, that there are separate points, right? The size of the space versus DEQ's concern about impervious versus pervious areas. And so I'm not sure we'll be able to deal with DEQ's issue, but I appreciate where Mr. Randall's coming from, especially since I, you know, use a commuter lot every workday, and I see these mega trucks in one-and-a-half spaces, basically. And I think it's probably something that we should address because we're probably going to keep having, building big trucks, and unless we deal with it, you know, they're going to be occupying more than one space. So I don't know that we have to deal with the other part. I don't think we have to separate out compact versus standard-size spaces. I think if we just dealt with the large truck.
Larger spaces.
Yeah, the rest stay normal-sized as they are now, and then we're just adding in, you know, 10, 15% have to be the nine by 12, which is what?
Well, starting with 25 for the advertisement, but probably getting to 10 or 15%.
Is that good? All right. Do we, do you have more to present? I don't want to cut you off like I did Mr. Raff.
No, but Susan reminded me, when we were doing the calculation, we looked at area, and the area, the area of the space, which ended up coming down to a two-space credit or a three-space credit, so, what, 120 square feet? You know, so we used the sizes of an eight-and-a-half by 18. And we did that when we looked at, if it was a percentage of spaces, how much would you save? And so then, when you break it down from the square feet, it was two spaces or three spaces, but it was based on an area. Does that make sense?
It does. All right. Any other questions? Do we want to move forward? Yep, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask you, are we looking, I got it that we've got 100 spaces, and is it over the minimum requirement of 100 spaces, or just anything that's required 100 spaces?
Or more.
100 or more.
So 100 or more spaces required.
Yeah, any use requiring 100 more spaces.
The opinion by setting it at 100, you can't go down to 50.
No, it's
Because that makes it more restrictive.
No, it's less restrictive. It has less of an impact. It's the amount of impact. So fewer people would be, fewer builders and developers would be impacted if we went from 100 to 50. So you got to
Or the other way around.
No.
Madam Chairman, how about a recommendation would be to incorporate into the motion flexibility for staff to advertise to achieve, let's say we get back to our offices and we all have an aha moment, say, oh, you know, one of the commissioners was right over the other, that we have enough flexibility that we can advertise it to achieve the desired result. I think, I think we understand here what the Planning Commission is shooting for in terms of the number, but the starting point, I think, is the question. So I think if the Planning Commission is amenable to that, that would be my recommendation.
Sounds good. Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, whoever does make the motion, and I'm not prepared to make it, needs to incorporate, number one, the language that we've already talked about, plus the changes recommended by Ms. Shelton, right, as well as this additional set of issues.
I would, I would ask first, is this a new motion? Because we had a motion on the table for the meeting date or for airing a public hearing on this.
No, we haven't made, nobody's made a motion.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just got to get to the final package that's going to be put forward to the, whatever, and whenever the public hearing is held.
All right. Then I'll try this. I make a motion that we advertise for the public hearing to be held at the August 29th meeting.
September 12th.
Or September 12th, okay, meeting of the Planning Commission, and that in the advertisement, a description would be provided by staff concerning the possibility for establishing varying parking space sizes to accommodate various-size vehicles. Does that cover it, Dan?
And?
And supervisor Shelton.
Do you have a friendly amendment?
One unit, one hall slot per room.
Oh, oh, and, okay, yes, and the recommendation by Supervisor Shelton to change the space requirements for hotels and motels to one space per room.
Mr. Harvey?
And Madam Chairman and Commissioner Bain, Commissioner, would you be willing to consider the staff's suggestion of allowing pervious pavement subject to agent approval?
Yes, I would. I will amend my motion to incorporate that.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bain, any comment? You wanted to take a stab at that, Mr. English? Anyone else?
I want to ask Mr. Rippon.
Okay. All right, go ahead and vote. We're sending, this is motion to send what Mr. Bain just said to public hearing on September 12th. Yeah, that was very good. All right, motion carries 7-0. So now, moving on to the Planning Director's Report, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The first item is informational. The Board Supervisors did grant the extension that the commission asked for to allow staff to further refine the bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan that we're currently working on. We've had one stakeholders' meeting. We want to come back to stakeholders with a notional map of where the bike and ped routes might be based on their input, and then we would ultimately start the process of getting some more public feedback so we can give the commission a good document to move forward for public hearing. So we would like to make progress in that regard. The new deadline would be November of this year, from where the commission would have to hold its hearing and make a recommendation. Item five under Planning Director's Report is the board referred two new street names to be designated within the Hartwood and Griffiths Whitewater election districts. Pierce, Bailey, Court would be looking would be located off of Courthouse Road, west of Interstate 95, and then Tank Creek Way would be located off of Widewater Road. Both are private roads that have more than two houses on them, have multiple lots. Staff believes they need to be named for public safety reasons, and the Board's Community and Economic Development Committee recommended moving forward with, with those street names.
So we need to authorize a public hearing on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a motion from any of you?
What's the deadline?
It would be 100 days from the Board's referral, so you could schedule it for your September meeting.
Right, I'm just trying to, I'm wondering, I don't know what September 12th looks like, so I'm wondering whether the second meeting in September would, would work.
Yeah, we've put a couple of things on September 12th today, so maybe September 26th is the next meeting. I need a motion from somebody.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Just to make sure, neither of those street names relate to any existing business along those roads, do they?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Bain, there is no relationship to any businesses associated with these street names. The, from my understanding, Pierce-Bailey Place is a reference to the names of families that live along that road segment, and then Tank Creek Way is, is reference to the fact that one of the large parcels along that private road abuts Tank Creek, which is the northern boundary of the county in Quantico.
All right.
Madam Chairman, may I make a motion that we set this for public hearing on September 26th?
Motion by Mr. English, second by Mr. Boswell. Any comments, Mr. English?
No, that includes both the namings of both roads that day.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Boswell? Anyone else? Go ahead and vote. It's very slow tonight. All right, motion carries 7-0. Mr. Harvey?
Item six is my attempt to fi, have a finalized legislative agenda from the Planning Commission. As you recall from the last meeting, the Commission gave me some feedback on adjustments. I've gone ahead and put that together in a, in a final draft form. If there's any additional adjustments, I can certainly make those. I have forwarded that on to the County Administrator's Office, and has been forwarded on to the Board's Legislative Committee.
Mr. Appicella, you had a comment?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I asked a question earlier during tonight's meeting about whether the, I guess it's GWRC and/or FAMPO was pushing for the calculation to be based solely on weekend, or both weekday and weekend, so I would just ask staff to take one, one more look at that, and make sure we've characterized this correctly, consistent with, again, what GWRC slash FAMPO are also recommending.
Will do.
All right, and this is just for our consumption, we don't need to take a vote on this, right? Dan?
I don't believe there's an action being proposed at this time, but I'll defer to Mr. Harvey.
Madam Chairman, it's up to the pleasure of the Commission, whether you want to vote on this or not. I'm taking it as is the will of the Commission.
Yeah, I think we all had some input. I don't think we need to vote. Anybody feels differently? All right, go ahead.
The next item is electronic agendas, and you, you will find attached a draft of a new format, in which we're starting to use with the Board of Supervisors. We're scheduled to go live in August for the first meeting, where we use this electronic agenda. Electronic agendas are essentially focused on how staff is preparing its reports, and how it's being reviewed internally. So it'll all be done in electronic format, rather than the current process where we pass around blue folders filled with paper documents, and draw physically on the paper. This would have everything done in track change format, PDF format, in electronic media. The ultimate product would be posted on the online agendas. As you can see, there's an abbreviated summary sheet, which tries to capture the essence of the issue, and then following it would be a background report, which gets into a lot of detail, like our typical staff reports. So staff want to make you, one, aware of the fact that the Board is going this direction, two, the staff has been discussing applying this potentially for all Boards and Commissions, including the Planning Commission, so if you have any concerns or, or feedback for staff, please let us know.
I think we talked about this earlier this week, Jeff, but if the Planning Commission wanted to move toward this, do we need to take a vote to be able to accept that?
No, Madam Chairman, it'd be, again, that's sort of the will of the Commission. If the Commission's fine with this, staff will proceed in that manner.
Does, does anybody object to the new agenda format?
And, and Madam Chairman, staff would wait a few months to roll it out, after we're convinced that we've got this process down clearly for Board of Supervisors' reports. We'll have to develop a similar internal process for us to prepare the Planning Commission's reports in that manner.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bain, did you have a question?
Just one, is it intended that this would be a one-page document, or could it extend on to several pages, depending on the amount of information that needed to be presented?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Bain, the intent was that it would be a summary document, so maybe one page, one and a half pages, for that initial cover document, and then we will have extensive staff reports with lots of attachments that would go with it. The idea behind it is that with the summary in the front page, or front page and a half, you can get the essence of what the issue is, and the staff recommendation in a quick view, and then can dive into the details as you look at the attachments.
Okay, that, yeah, I was just envisioning trying to get some of these things that have come before the Board into a two-line statement to clearly explain what it was, so as long as it can be more than one page, I, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
And then, Madam Chairman, and the final item on the agenda for the Planning Director's Report is e-commerce text amendments. As you recall, the Planning Commission had a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance specifically for home-based businesses, and to accommodate e-commerce. After the Commission took its vote, we went and were preparing an advertisement for the Board of Supervisors. At that point in time, we received legal advice that the uses for home-based businesses had changed, and we had not covered it in all of our zoning categories, so we needed to go back and redo the advertisement, and rehold the Planning Commission's hearing. So staff would request the, the Commission authorize us to advertise a new public hearing to cover all the missing components that we had. Ms. Blackburn also has had one or two observations that she would like to mention to the Commission, if you're so inclined.
Go ahead, Ms. Blackburn.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, yes, in, in replacing the home business with Home Business One, in our planned unit development districts, and this should start on page nine of your ordinance, I just want you to kind of look at that. For the various things, like the PT and D, in replacing home business with Home Business One, it's actually under the conditional use approval. And I know our intentions was that the Home Business One would be a by right use in single-family homes, and that works great through R3. But when we get into these planned unit development types of situations, the densities are higher, the lots are smaller, the allowability of, of having people come and go to the homes, like we did in, that were proposed in Home Business One, may not be as conducive as in a conventional subdivision. And I wanted you all to see these, to make sure it is still the intent of what you wanted it to do. And in the PT and D, it is a conditional use permit, and PD1 and PD2, initially it was special exception, and if we're going to allow it, I would like, I suggest we keep it there. Again, we're smaller lots, more dense communities, and it just may not be conducive to have people coming and going as much as we designed in the Home Business One. And the RDA One is also on page 10, was a replacement for, in the conditional use. Now, when we got into the transfer of development rights, the A1 and the R1, it's, it's the same situation. There's no problem with that, but again, we get into the PD1, and just the replacement was to be in a special exception, both in the PD1, PD2, and then the PT and D, onto page 11, is also in a conditional use permit. And so, I guess I ask if you, how, how do you want to handle, or not change at all, how we allow for the Home Business Ones in these more condensed neighborhoods? And there is no deadline on, in voting on this, and I can submit, make some changes to this, and let you see that along, so you can just have another look at it, because this was just...
Can you remind us what single-family dwelling means versus multifamily dwelling?
Multifamily dwelling would be, in short, single family is one house per lot, and multifamily would be something according to like a apartment building. Now, we were not allowing Home Business Ones in anything but a single-family home. That was part of the definition. But when you get into some of these condensed areas, it is not the same kind of layout. Lots are smaller, setbacks are closer to the streets, things like this. It just may not be conducive, and I want you to be aware of that, just so you know. And it was something we really didn't discuss a lot in the committee meeting. We centered more on a conventional subdivision.
Right, but you, you go to these, I'll call them unique types of developments, where you usually have a mix of housing. You may have apartments, townhomes, and single-family dwellings.
Yes.
So, for the apartments and townhomes, they still wouldn't be able to do a Home Business One within, within the PT and D, PD1 and PD2. So even if you're, if you have a single-family home on a smaller lot, I'm still not, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure why we would be more restrictive, just because they're on a smaller footprint.
Well, and I wanted you to be aware, because we did not center on this in the committee meeting, on these more dense types of development, and just so that you would know. And if you don't want any changes, that's fine.
So R3 is the, before you get to PT and D, is the smallest lot size, right?
Of, of, and a conventional, yes.
And what, what's that size, generally?
For single-family homes, the lot widths are 80 feet, and front is 20 feet, front yard setback is 20 feet, rear yard setback is 35, inside is 10.
And, and can you walk us through the lot sizes? Does it, does it stipulate lot sizes for single-family versus multifamily?
In the, in the R3, or?
No, and as you go forward to PT and D, PD1 and PD2.
Oh, PT and D gets into various things of transect zones, and if you're in a certain transect zone, you can have this size.
So what's the, what's the smallest size, again, for a single-family type home? Or is that discernible?
I think we actually just changed one to 40, 40 feet wide, in the PD2. Jeff, what was the amendment we made for the...
Madam Chairman, as Ms. Blackburn's alluding to, last year the Board modified the PD2 zone to allow a 40-foot-wide, single-family detached lot.
Yeah.
And the minimum size for those lots was 4,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Most other zoning categories have a lot size around 6,500 square feet as the minimum.
Any other questions, Mr. Appicella?
I, I'm just wondering why, let's just say we decided to have a different, that they wouldn't be by right, for example, why a conditional use permit under PT and D versus a special exception?
Well, the conditional use permit situation was where it was just actually replaced. It was to replace the home business with Home Business One, as far as where it was going to be located in the ordinance, and in the PT and D, it happened to be in the conditional use approval section.
Right, but could we not move it to?
Sure.
Special except, I mean, I mean, conditional use permit, that's, that's $10,000 right there.
Well, exactly. And so these were the things that, in doing this, I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of it, and if there were any changes you wanted to make, or leave it the way it was, I can provide you more information on this, and give you a copy of lot sizes in the various zoning districts, if you would like to go for...
I think that would be helpful, and there's no time limit on this? We have a little bit of time.
Yeah, there's no time limit on this.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Appicella?
And, again, I would also ask you to take a look at, you know, not requiring a conditional use permit.
Oh, I agree.
Because I think that's overly burdensome for H, Home Business One.
All right. Is that all the questions? So we're just gonna table this, give Ms. Blackburn some time? How much time do we want to give her?
We can bring it up the next meeting, that you have.
September 12th?
Sure. Oh, are we having an August one?
Well, that'll be, that'll, I think that's gonna be for something different.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We're gonna skip the County Attorney's Report, and move into committee reports.
Madam Chairman, I object to that course of proceeding. This is a, you know, a somewhat unfortunate report, I would think, I don't know, for the Planning Commissioners. You know, I think most of you, if not all of you, are aware that this is going to be my last meeting with the Planning Commission. I'm going to be leaving the County Attorney's Office in August. My last day will be August 8th. I'm gonna be joining the City of Chesapeake City Attorney's Office, in a, primarily, I think, litigation role, so it's gonna be kind of evolving, and be doing some land use and other things like that. So I just want to take this opportunity to, to thank everybody on here. It's been a pleasure working with everyone, all the, all the Commissioners, all the county staff members, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisnewski. It's been a pleasure to have you on the Planning Commission. I was devastated when I found out, so I'm very, very sad.
I've seen you every day, and you never said a word to me.
Madam Chairman, can we choose not to accept the County Attorney's Report?
I, I think that we should do that, and I also think we should have our 15th meeting canceled and moved to August 8th, and make him, and make him come to it.
I'll have to talk with HR about what time of day the, the business day ends.
All right, we're gonna do it on the 7th, then. All right, thank you, Dan. Moving on to committee reports, Mr. English, you have A1?
Yeah, and I need to change the date to September the 12th.
So we're gonna have a packet before the 12th to review?
We should, yeah.
We can get this off the agenda.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay, so for the Chairman's Report, I am suggesting to the Commission a consideration for a motion to cancel the August 15th meeting, and to change the August 29th meeting from a work session to a special meeting to accommodate the public hearing that was voted on tonight to move toward the 29th. Does anybody want to make a motion for that? All right, so Mr. Boswell makes the motion. Any seconds?
I'll second that.
Mr. Randall makes the second. Any comment from anyone? All right, go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries 7-0, so that brings us into other business, which is a TRC information meeting on August 8th for the Griffiths-Widewater Election District for the Reserve at Woodstock. And now, based on our modified agenda, I would like to ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve a resolution to authorize a closed meeting, whereas the Commission desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members regarding the Department of Justice's investigation, which is a specific legal, legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-371188, such discussion...
such discussion may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Stafford County Planning Commission, on this eighteenth day of July, 2018, does hereby authorize discussion of this above matter in closed meeting.
Do you have a second?
My second.
All right, motion by Mr. Appicella, second by Mr. McPherson, any comment? Anyone? Okay, everybody vote. All right, motion carries seven zero, we will be.
Our closed session, CM eighteen dash oh-four A.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Appicella, second by Mr. Bain. Any comments, gentlemen?
No, ma'am.
Any other ones? All right, go ahead and vote for certification of the closed session. All right, motion carries seven zero, a last action item this evening, approval of the June thirteenth minutes. All right, motion by Mr. Boswell, do we have a second?
Madam, I have a correction.
Oh, okay. Do we just take the correction before, because we had a motion and a second? Okay.
I think the proper form would be to maybe make a friendly amendment to the motion.
Yeah, so, make a friendly amendment to the motion with your corrections.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion. Line nine twelve of the minutes attributes those comments to Mr. Randall. Those were, in fact, made by myself, Commissioner McPherson. I understand we do look a lot alike, same hairstyle and all, but they were me. And that's, that's all I have to amend, thank you.
All right, so, motion to approve the minutes with the friendly amendment by Commissioner McPherson on his edits. So, we had a motion by Mr. Boswell. Who do we have a second by? Mr. Randall? All right, go ahead and vote. Or any comments? Okay, go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries seven zero, meeting adjourned.